Those in favor, oh, actually, yeah, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, okay, great. Um, all right, so we are first of all going to talk about, uh, any announcements. Um, Mary Ann, yes? Yeah, actually, yeah, let's start with Y S Equity and then we'll talk about Earth Week.
All right.
Okay.
Hi, everybody, my name's Chloe Mayner.
Chloe, I'll have you come right up to this mic.
Yep, all right.
Yes, want to make sure anybody out there also gets to hear everything you have to say.
Okay. Hi, my name's Chloe Mayner, I'm the new project manager for Y S Equity, so working for the Yellow Springs Community Foundation. So I'm pretty new to town, I wanted to just come and introduce myself and then also to let everyone know that our next round of applications are going to be opening between the dates of May 12th and the 21st. We'll be flyer-ing all over town, but the next 15 participants for a Y S Equity program will be chosen by the end of May and will receive their payments by July 1st. And for those of you that don't know, Y S Equity is a guaranteed income program that is supported under the community foundation and participants can apply on our website. And like I said, we choose 15 new participants every six months right now. It's guidelines have to do with income. If folks have applied before, they need to apply again in order to be reconsidered this time. And, um, yeah, we send out $300 a month guaranteed cash for 24 months. And I'm really excited to be on board and if anybody has any questions, you can contact us through the website. And like I said, we'll be flyer-ing and talking all over town about the program as it comes closer.
All right, thanks Chloe.
Cool, thank you.
Yeah, and that reminds me, Phillip, it'd be great to put a post on our Facebook page just to kind of remind people about what's coming up in May. All right, thanks a lot. All right, Mary Ann, Earth Week.
Is the sound, white sound noise going to go off shortly?
In about 30 seconds.
Okay, so this week is Earth Week in Yellow Springs. And this is going to be our third consecutive celebration of Earth Week, in the recent past, anyway. Tomorrow at the library, there will be a program about Glen Helen Raptors. On Wednesday, there will be a bird walk in Ellis Park. And on Saturday, there are so many things happening, I can't, I'm not going to mention them, but there are flyers there for everyone here and anyone who gets the newspaper also got the flyer. Then on Sunday is the actual celebration and it's going to be in the John Bryan Center outside where the farmer's market usually is. We're going to have over, we have a couple dozen vendors who have information, information about plants, solar, anything to do with environment. We have local, regional, and people coming from the state and the Corn Drinkers, any of you who know the Corn Drinkers. Last time, a lot of people came just to hear the Corn Drinkers. And we'll have food, so I invite everyone to come Sunday from 1:30 to 4:30, right out there in the back of the John Bryan Park where the farmer's market is held on Saturday. There's also going to be six cars from Drive Electric Dayton. And people can get free rides in the electric cars, so I encourage everyone to come.
All right, thanks, Mary Ann. Kevin, were you going to say something?
I'm just looking around for more chairs.
All right.
There are two right there.
Yeah, it looks like we reserved two for Amy and Heather, welcome. Yeah, and of course, part of that Earth Day weekend is Celebrate Trails Day. So I know that we've got our Bike Patrol out there, I think we are going to be grilling some dogs and, uh...
That's right, and Fire Department will be joining us as well.
Oh, good, yeah, so Fire Rescue is going to be out there as well and, uh, yeah, they'll be showing people how to ride bikes, including, uh, we've also got Black Pug. So if you have not gotten your bike out this year yet, Chris does free bike safety checks. So I know that Judy's always first in line for those. And we'll have a variety of other things going on right in front of the Yellow Springs train station. Okay, so Amy, were you guys here to do an announcement about Y S Pride?
Yeah.
Okay. Christine, is that you or Amy or? Okay, come on up, come on down.
Hi, so I'm here to do an announcement about Y S Pride. This year's theme is called Love Riot, so that's exciting. It's going to be the last Saturday in June, which it always is, on June 24th, we will be doing it at Mills Lawn. And so we are working through some things right now with the village of exactly, you know, where the placement of everything is, but that's going to be our key area is Mills Lawn. And then we will have our parade at noon, so that is what's taking place. We also wanted to let you know that we did include in today's council packet a sponsorship letter for the village. And there is a presenting sponsor level of $5,000 if the village would like to be a presenting sponsor with us. And that's our announcement, thank you.
All right, thanks a lot, Amy. Should we talk about, um, what's happening the Saturday after? The pickup, is that what it's called?
The Munch pickup?
Oh, take back.
Take back, oh, we have a drug collection event that's run by the Police Department. We collect expired unwanted meds, so it's on, I think it's, is it on one of these?
Yes.
It's on this flyer as well, so right there, Saturday 29th, from 9 to 5 is the Take Back Day and that's happening Friday and Saturday. So bring, uh, bring your, your drugs to the Police Department. By that I mean, unexpired unwanted prescription meds to be properly disposed of.
Okay, hey, Mary Ann, do you want to hold up our Scenic Ohio Award down there? All right, so, um, Mark Heiss and Don Hollister were with me Friday before last and, um, Yellow Springs was one of five communities that received the Scenic Ohio Award. So we were up in Columbus at the History Museum, a very cool place. And, um, you know, what they really highlight is conservation, preservation, uh, things like having a thriving downtown. I mean, all the things that Yellow Spring is so lucky to represent. And so that was a really nice thing to receive and, um, we'll have a nice place for that to hang in the John Bryan Center. I also wanted to mention, and we'll get more of an update on this soon from Tony Dosick, but the, uh, I have been appointed the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission's Age Friendly Initiative Chair. And I think that's a really nice tie-in to a lot of the focus that the Equitable Age Friendly Group is working on as well as Inclusive Yellow Springs. And Hosway, I've heard a lot of compliments about you representing us at the meeting on Friday, so thanks for that. There is a Complete Streets Policy Development Workshop that I thought everyone should know about because it's geared towards elected officials as well as, uh, government administrative staff. It's part of the Cycling Summit that Bike Miami Valley does every year, so it's May 19th and that workshop is from 1 to 5 at the Dayton Metro Library. So I don't know if anyone here is interested, remember, we do have a Complete Streets Policy in Yellow Springs, but that is a free training opportunity. And then, uh, the other thing I wanted to flag is the Ohio Municipal League is doing an employee recruitment and retention survey. I think we all get those emails, remember, if you don't, make sure to find out how to get those. So we can certainly fill things out, but I also wanted to just flag, it'd be great to see the results of that survey and make sure that that's maybe in our packet. Okay, Gavin?
Oh, no, I was just...
Okay, all right.
I have one more, Ryan, we have, this Thursday, we will have the mammogram bus out here at the John Bryan Center. This is the second time this year we're doing the mammogram screenings. There's a high demand for it, so we'll continue to sponsor that program as long as there's demand for it. So that will be taking place this Thursday.
Okay, great. Any other announcements? Okay, then I think we're going to move into our consent agenda and we've got two items. We have the minutes from our last meeting and then our monthly credit card statement. So first of all, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the April 3rd meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. And secondly, a motion to approve the credit card statement.
I move.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay. Review of the agenda, anything we need to add, remove, or modify? So actually, one thing, um, I kind of thought maybe we should talk a little bit about is the Y S Pride request. Particularly, there were some things around location and whatnot, so I guess we would put that under new business. Anything else?
I'd like to pull out the housing report from the housing group and talk about that during managers' report.
Good. Anything else? Okay, then, I believe Kevin, you're going to wow us with petitions and communications.
Yes, I aim to wow. All right, so the clerk has received and will file the following. There's a letter from Matthew Kirk with a link to a Strong Towns article. The mayor's clerk has submitted a couple of monthly reports and a quarterly report. John Hippeling has two letters regarding zoning changes. Matt Raska, a letter expressing the need for housing in Yellow Springs. Patty Dallas submitted a letter in support of the Homeeek funding request. Carmen Milano has a letter in support of the Homeeek funding request. Sue Parker has a letter in support of the Homeeek funding request. Ellis Jacobs wrote in support of the Homeeek P U D with the letters written. Y S Pride submitted the letter that Amy referred to in addition to a poster flyer that are in the packet. Y S P D has the letter regarding the Drug Take Back Event that Hosway so eloquently spoke about a few moments ago. And also, Y S P D also has a document with a QR code in it so that those that are willing to do so can submit donations for the drug, for the, not therapy, not drug dog, but the therapy dog donations. There's some history there that I won't go into about our previous candidate. And that's the end of what we have for petitions and communications, thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Kevin. All right, so we're going to move into legislation. First up is the first reading of Ordinance 202317, which we can do by title only.
All right, this is repealing and replacing Chapter 1242.04 Anexed Land of the Yellow Springs Zoning Code.
All right, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Denise?
So one of the things that came up at the Planning Commission meeting was the fact that when we annex land into the village, it comes in at the lowest density. I think that the thought behind that has been, um, to have the expect, you know, you don't know what you're going to get, so bring it in at the lowest and then you can negotiate it. What we want, and we already know, we want to have all different types of housing, so the recommendation was to make it R B, moderate density, so all of those different types of housing can be automatically allowed in that. And that's all it is.
Questions for Denise?
Yes, Denise, first of all, thank you for the memo.
Sure.
Always does help to sort of encapsulate, you know, these big hairy complicated things into, into a paragraph or two. So one question about annexation, just basics, must any property that's annexed be contiguous or next to an existing village boundary?
That's what, that's how I understand it, yes. That would be an Amy question.
Amy's coming.
It's a 5% contiguity requirement in Ohio, so the parcel that you'd be looking, the property that you'd be looking to annex has to have at least 5% with the current village limits.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. And given the various, um, covenants and whatnot for the various properties around this, is there a very much contiguous land that is available for annexation?
Well, I mean, we're also looking at the urban service boundary, so we have quite a bit of land on the northwest area and we still have some undeveloped land in the south area.
Okay, okay, all right.
Good.
I think that's the questions I have on annexation, thank you very much.
All right, other questions for Denise? So I'll ask you the question I asked you before the meeting and I saw this was discussed at the Planning Commission meeting, so why not R C?
I honestly can't remember what, did they blow that off or do what, I don't remember what their final...
Well, Susan Stiles brought it forward, but I didn't discern any reason not to go R C.
I don't, I don't have any reason not to go R C, I mean, if that, if that's going to be undeveloped land and it's in the urban service boundary, then that land is going to have to be engineered to meet the density requirements so that the stormwater is managed. So I don't see that as an issue, but I mean, it does provide higher density.
All right, great. All right, thanks Denise. Okay, other questions or comments from council members? Okay. All right, so I guess I do have a question, so if I wanted to, I guess amend this to be R C instead of R B, can, can we still do that? Like, could this still be the first reading and?
It would be the first of three now.
Okay.
You'd have another first reading with the amendment the next, at the next meeting.
Okay. Um, all right, well, I think actually, so yeah, um, I want to make a motion to amend this legislation to say that it comes in as R C, not R B. Okay? So I guess discussion is basically what Denise just said, our goal is higher density. So I think that's a better starting point and still means that engineering, utility checks, all the other things need to happen. But, um, it seems, it seems in line with what we want to do. Kevin?
Yeah, she was just wants to ask a general question, I don't know, Denise, if I'm remembering something, a phrase from your memo or something you just said. But regardless of what the actual zoning is at a point in time, is there not room or some rationale for negotiating one way or the other?
It depends on how, how they want to do it, I mean, if it's a, if it's a P U D, there's lots of opportunities baked into the code for, for that, for density bonuses, basically. Otherwise, R C's pretty, allows up to 14 units per acre and, yeah, does that answer your question?
Yeah, it did.
Okay.
Great, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. Any other thoughts on the motion? Okay, so all those in favor with amending to R C signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so then, otherwise, I mean, I know there are lots of people that are following the zoning, but I, I guess unless there's something compelling that needs to be said, we'll have a second reading and a public hearing. John, you have something compelling that needs to be said? Okay, um, then, uh, yeah.
Actually, it'd be another first reading.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, so we'll, we'll have two more readings of this, so plenty of time to discuss. But let's go ahead and take a vote with the amended version, Judy.
All right, McQueen?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Devor Leonard?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Howsh?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, as a side note, I want to thank Planning Commission for all the work that they've done on this as well as Neighbors for More Neighbors. So with that...
Can I just, is it okay for people to bring in chairs, is that a?
That's fine.
Okay, just so anybody knows, if you need chairs, feel free to bring any in you find.
That's the key.
I don't know, I would go do it, but I feel like I'm supposed to sit.
Should we get some more chairs? All right, thank you, Johnny.
Thanks, Johnny.
Okay, so next we're going to read Ordinance 202318 by title only, please.
This is repealing and replacing Chapter 1248 Residential Districts of the Yellow Springs Zoning Code.
All right, can I get a motion?
I move.
I second.
Okay, Denise?
This is allowing for attached single-family, multifamily, and two-family dwellings in Residential A. Planning Commission is requesting, is making the recommendation that that be as a conditional use.
Good. Questions for Denise?
Well, I don't have a question.
A comment?
I have a statement.
Okay.
As many of us know, we're seeing more and more cities, towns across the country changing, liberalizing their zoning. And numerous articles about the importance of doing that. I did have, I tried to send something to council, but Judy wasn't able to open it, but a recent book called, um, America's Frozen Neighborhoods, The Abuse of Zoning. I'm not going to go into a long history of zoning just to say that there's, in my opinion, there are legitimate reasons for zoning and illegitimate reasons. Legitimate health, safety, and whatever the community welfare is. Residence A or and B, as far as I'm concerned, restrictive zoning that allows people with big yards to be insured that they're going to, their neighbors are going to have big yards, has nothing to do, in my opinion, with safety, health, or community welfare. I think it's an illegitimate use of zoning and there are a number of articles in this particular book that describe why it is. Therefore, I support having this be by right rather than conditional. And so I am going to make a motion that this be permitted. Do I have a second?
My second.
Okay. Okay, well, let's further discuss the amendment then.
Talk about that a little bit.
Yes.
Would like to talk about.
Yes, please.
There's a couple of different reasons why we wanted it to be conditional. Conditional doesn't mean it's a no, it's an allowed use. It literally means you got to go before the Planning Commission, usually that's one meeting. What I don't want to see happen is to take away the voice of the neighbors. Time and time again, we have seen in the conditional use process, neighbors have an opinion about things. I think Planning Commission understands what legally they can weigh in on and what they can't. We don't look at right to privacy, but we do look at things that can maybe make that project a little bit better. And that's what happens when you allow other voices to come to the table. I'll use the Pocket Neighborhood Development as an example on Zini Avenue. The neighbors were really freaked out about the, about the traffic, about the parking on Woodrow. And what came out of that was a complete change from a two-way ingress egress to a one-way. And that would have never happened if we hadn't had that input from the neighbors. So from that perspective, I don't want to see that taken away. I don't think anybody else on staff wants to, nor Planning Commission, I mean, at least the majority. Now, when you get into infrastructure, that's a whole nother thing. And we need to be able to evaluate that, I think Johnny can speak to it more. But I want you to think about the fact that if Johnny, if I say to Johnny, okay, this property, can you do a utility review on this property? And he comes back and he goes, yeah, okay, it's going to be $50,000 to move that line. Or what's going to, what's going to happen? To me, if you have a planning commission body of five that hears that, then you've got five people that are weighing in on that and making a decision to, are we going to make that a condition of approval or not? If it's Johnny, I know what's going to happen, there's going to be people that are going to call up and they're going to think he's being biased or for some reason he's not, he's overinflated the cost. There's going to be things, and you're going to get phone calls from these people, I mean, it happens, or it's going to be all over the social media. So I feel for the infrastructure, we need to take the moment to be able to have them look at it, him to be able to get estimates. If you're going through a conditional use process, you're pretty much serious about it because you're going to be getting engineering plans and things like that. That's not necessary for the Planning Commission review. If, if somebody is mostly worried about the use, I will not make them go through the civil engineering part of it and just ask that as a condition of approval, that Planning Commission allows staff to make that final decision. So they don't have to put a lot of money up front in order to, if they're worried about whether this conditional use is going to pass or not. But I think the conditional use process has a place and I hate to see it go.
And I, I, I have a question and a comment. So, so, and the most recent issue of the Yellow Springs News, Cheryl Durgan's had an editorial which highlights what I think is the shameful history of Yellow Springs in regard to housing. And in the eighties, it was okay, and I think it was on Planning Commission, in fact, that they talked about how... In the, and in the 80s, it was okay, and I think it was on Planning Commission, in fact, that they talked about how they didn't want poor people around, or they didn't want to pay for poor kids in school or something. I'm not, don't quote me because I don't remember exactly what the context was. But it's shameful that we basically drove an affordable rental project out of town in the 80s. And we've continued to do similar things, only not quite so blatantly since then.
But is that done at the planning commission level? Please.
But I just, but let me ask the question. So my question is, is there any reason to have residence, conditional use in Residence A that's different from B or C?
It's conditional in B for multifamily.
And what about C?
It's permitted.
So I guess my, I don't, why would there be? Why is there, what is the legitimate reason for having different zonings? So that in some residential zones, it's conditional and some it's permitted. What is the rationale? And following up on that, why can't there be something stated within the permitting process that certain criteria have to be made, whether it's checking on the utility, assuming that the utilities are going to, you know, be functional or something like that?
Well, I mean, I mean, that is the process, that's what the conditional use process is for, is to be able to go, to be able to look at all that stuff.
But can't that be in a permitted, permitted, assuming?
Sure. And then, and then what I'm going back to what I'm saying is, is staff going to be believed when they give those numbers? I think that it needs to be in a public process that, yeah, this is going to cost this much to do this. You're wanting, RA was zoned single-family back in the 60s. At that time, the engineers that designed that, designed that for single-family zoned lots, and the lots were already laid out, and the engineering was designed for that. Now we're taking what could have been like a 90-unit lot area, and we could make it 180. But we still have the same underlying infrastructure. So it needs to have a utility review that's a little bit more involved. And and the property owner, if they're going to want to split that property off, should have to pay for that removal of the power line or or some other thing that might, and Johnny, this is really your area. Oh, you're going to buy me a drink. She's on her way out.
I'll buy you a drink.
But yeah, so. Anyway, so but it's better for him to be able, for him to be able to state that in front of a body of five people so that it's publicly out there and it's not. It's not just him saying to the person on the phone, yeah, you're going to have to spend $50,000 in order to get that pole removed if you want to build that.
So that, that really doesn't, I hear what you're saying, it doesn't make, what, it doesn't make sense to me. What does make sense to me is that we definitely want to have our infrastructure serve whatever gets developed. That makes sense. What I don't like is to have neighbors have the right to weigh in on something in one area town that they don't have the right to weigh in on in another area. And frankly, we have found that that is what causes, that's what allows NIMBY. The people who live, in this case, in Residence A that have large lots, a lot, not all of them by any means, but some of them, they like that. That's, that's nice. They don't want anyone, they don't want a smaller lot, they don't want a smaller house. And that, and as we're hearing and seeing nationally, that does not allow for the voices for all the other people who have either no home, I mean, we have this huge homeless issue in the country. We have a housing crisis, we have an environmental crisis, we have a lot of reasons for increasing density. And so my, my big concern is to not have people in a higher-income area be able to keep out smaller lots and smaller houses because they don't want that. That, that's my concern.
Can I just say something about the planning process once again? There are specific conditions that can be applied to a conditionally permitted use. Other, other things don't factor in. If I'm the neighbor and I say, I don't like it, that's going to ruin my view, and besides, I don't want those poor people next to me. Those are not conditions to not approve that use.
No.
If I said, my dog got hit three times out in front, this street's too narrow, and my toilet won't flush. Now we may need some conditions about widening the road and upgrading the sewer. Again, those are not conditions to deny, they are conditions, reasons to deny, they are reasons to apply conditions that mitigate situations for the neighbors. Again and again, Planning Commission has come straight through the gate and weighed in fairly. It is when that goes to council that it turns the other direction. It's a little ironic that council wants to push back on the Planning Commission recommendation when it has not ever been Planning Commission pushing back on a project or saying, no, you can't do it. They have literally said, these are the conditions under which you may proceed with this project. Then it goes to council, council's vote is the political vote. Planning Commission's vote is based in fact.
Okay, Carmen?
Yeah, I'm 100% in favor of healthy discourse and robust discussion. Everybody needs to have the opportunity to be heard. So I really appreciate Denise weighing in. And that's all. I appreciate it.
Okay. Gavin, Kevin, comments?
Okay, well, I will just reiterate what, one thing that Denise said is a conditional use requirement is not a no. It's a reason to say a qualified yes. And I think that's important.
I just want to say, just in comment on that, in eight years that I've been doing this, we've never denied anybody on a conditional use like that.
And that's, that's important to be heard.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, if if people want to come up and embarrass themselves and say they don't want poor people next to them, that's on them. I mean, everybody has a right to free speech, so let them say it, but that doesn't, that's not how Planning Commission is going to evaluate it.
Yeah, thanks, Amy. Please do.
Specifically on this issue of what she just said. So we have a property owner who's looking to take a single-family home and convert it into a duplex, let's say, right? After the change you've made tonight, you are, you're going to consider tonight, let's say you've made a change to make it a permitted use. They go forward to, they have their plans, they're going to do it, they come in and meet with staff. Staff says, okay, yeah, you can do this, but you've got a $50,000 fee to move this line, and you've got this issue with stormwater, and you've got this issue with sewer. So figure that out, and then you can have your permit. And they say, well, that's not fair, that's not true, I don't, my expert says I don't need to do that, et cetera. Their legal recourse at that point is obviously a lawsuit, it's a lawsuit in both hypotheticals. But in this first case where it's a permitted use, their legal recourse is a writ of mandamus, which means they're going to have to, they're going to have to be able to establish to the court that they had a clear legal right to what they were asking, and that the staff was being unreasonable or arbitrary, or, you know, making, making a poor decision and saying, no, this is going to, you have to do this with stormwater, and this with sewer, and this was with electric. That's a high standard for that property owner to meet. Rite of mandamus cases are very difficult, they're different, they're expensive, they're hard to bring, and they're hard to establish and get granted by a court. If you go forward and make this as a conditional use, which was absolutely, I advised Planning Commission that I thought that was advisable, there's a million reasons why, a myriad of reasons. I'm really looking forward to having this conversation actually in front of council. But with this particular issue, if you go forward as a conditional use, property owner comes in, says, hey, I want to make my house a duplex, okay, staff guides them through the conditional use application. They go in front of Planning Commission, neighbors show up and neighbors say, don't do this, this is a terrible idea, NIMBY all over, right? And Planning Commission says, well, the neighbors don't want it, we're going to vote it down, no conditional use. Their legal recourse at that point is an administrative appeal to common police court. It's easy to bring, it's cheap, it's set up that, I say cheap because it's easy to draft the pleadings and get it filed quickly. It's set up that way under the law so that citizens can appeal decisions, administrative decisions of city councils and village councils and township trustees in that way and get right into court. And then the trial court at that point is treated as an appellate court, they're, they're the appeal, the court of appeals, looking at Planning Commission's decision. And the trial court has the ability to either say, okay, Planning Commission, you made the right call. Planning Commission, you did not make the right call, we're granting this conditional use. So it's, it's faster, there's usually no trial oral argument hearings, it's usually just a couple of brief filed by each side. So the recourse to the property owner that wants to have the duplex is actually clearer on the conditional use path than it is on the permitted use path because there is that, that utility review issue, which we'll be discussing that, at least, maybe not tonight, but at the next meeting, we'll be talking more about utilities review. So at some point, they're going to run into that issue with utilities. And that issue is more clearly addressed on the conditional use path than on the permitted use path. Anything else you want to talk about at this point?
Could I ask Johnny a question?
Sure.
Johnny? Not going to get out of this. Okay, so we've been hearing all these arguments about why having more than a single-family on a, on a lot should be conditional. Are there instances where the kind of things that people are talking about come up in a single-family lot?
Is there things that for infrastructure-wise?
Poles, infrastructure, whatever, all these driveways, where the house is located.
College is my go-to, where they allowed them to split the lot. The homeowner was supposed to do a lot of things prior to doing the development. I now have wire three feet over top of a roof because as soon as he did it, as soon as he sold it, he sold his house. He's in Columbus, Cincinnati, Springfield, so, so now I have that issue to contend with. They also hooked the new house up to an abandoned sewer that was in the back. They didn't check the right one, so I had that extra cost because now we have sewer going into the ground. And then when the one storm happens, I've got a pole now laying right across the house. So, yes, there is instances where it's happening, we have another lot that's sold that people was going to build a house on, and they decided to back out of it because it was $113,000 to move the overhead power line because it's exactly where they want to put their house.
Okay, so I guess I flip my question around. Maybe, I, I, I know about the lots, but I remember that, but I mean, is the, is this kind of situation something that would come up potentially and or has come up where someone just going to build one house on one lot somewhere? Do any of these situations come up? And then if they do, then maybe everything should be conditional.
Okay, so if you want to build a house on Union Street and that big open lot, there's no infrastructure on Union Street. There's no way to get it unless you have it engineered and brought it there. So that would be another example, if somebody wanted to build a single-family house there, they would have to go through the conditional because it's going to be changed. I'm all for conditional, it gives the eyes and ears, it gives us more time to plan. If you go to Ho Sway's neighborhood and they want to build another house and beside Ho Sway's lot, can't do it. We got an inch and a half water line in his backyard, got a four-inch sewer in the backyard. So if we make it permitted, and all of a sudden they want to put a duplex there, now you're putting infrastructure in for two blocks to be able to get what you are now permitted. That's the reason why we want to take our time, make sure that we're doing it. I, I'm glad she come back up and said it because I've been here for nine years. I've never seen the first thing denied. Matter of fact, what I have seen is staff holding hands with people, making sure that they got the right things in the row to make it happen. You know as well as I do, I sit in meeting after meeting with the home development at Zinnia Avenue. Engineers, it'll work, it'll work, it'll work, until it doesn't work, and they had to change it. You can only hold their hand so much, and then you got to let them fail. So we, as staff, it is our duty to make sure that we don't let them create a problem if we can help it. Prime example is yours on your lateral for your ADU in the back. If we'd allowed you to take that lateral across somebody else's property, that's a potential problem for us. It happened on Talis. Same thing, Talis and North College, somebody owned two lots, then they decided to split it, then they sold it, and then another person sold it. Well, guess who had to eat the cost? The village, because it's an infrastructure now. These are the reasons why we need to slow down. I can take you to multiple places because back in the day, the good old boys, the friends, the family, there's water mains that run from one person's basement across their side yard because the neighbor used to own that house, and he built a house next to it, and they ran a water main from one side to the other. Guess who owns that water main now? Please keep it permitted, or please keep it conditional. Let us have the opportunity, we're not the bad guys, we're not here to oh, poor pity these persons, blah, blah, blah. We are here to help, and we have always been here to help people.
So Johnny, if we had a strict requirement for the utility review, then why would we still need it to be conditional?
For every property, really.
Yeah.
Well, you still need the Planning Commission to look at it. They've got their checklist, just because I say something doesn't mean that the other five, I can give you a number all day long. She's dead on the money. If I tell somebody it's going to cost them $30,000 to do it, they're going to go get a price, and they're like, well, I can get it done for about 10, and then I can't do nothing about it. We need it to be to where we have the say-so on what needs to be done to make it happen.
Okay, other questions or comments from council?
I'd like to hear what other council members think, given that we've just had quite a bit of information given to us by our staff.
Mm-hmm. Well, if, if it wasn't clear in my earlier comments, I mean, I support the recommendation as it came from Planning Commission, and I support staff's position on the remaining condition.
Oh, no, I think it was important to have this part of the discussion because over and over again, I feel like, just sitting up here for, for the short time that I have, that staff's I don't want to say the staff is not being listened to, I don't want to say staff is not being heard, but any opportunity we have for this kind of discussion is important. We need to be able to hear from the people that are doing the work. Everyone has lofty aspirations and, and, and there's really good philosophy and, and really good thoughts behind a lot of stuff. But I'm not interested in making anything more difficult on the people that do the work. And I think it's important that we keep having these kinds of, kinds of discussions. That's it.
I, I mean, I guess I'll just say it's, it's complex. I think I, I think I would probably land on the side of keeping it conditional. The only part where I'm, I sort of got lost at the end was this idea of, I think where you were going with your question, Brian, where I can, the utility review seems like a just total no-brainer, like, we have to do that because we, otherwise we can't, you know, maintain our, you know, maintain our infrastructure. The part about the like NIMBY stuff and the figuring out how do you sort of formally edit that out seems reasonable to me. So I was trying to figure out if there was some like middle ground there, but there wasn't anything about this in the packet, right? I'm not, okay, I just, so I, given the conversation, if I have to decide right now about this particular question?
Not the question we're discussing, which is make.
All kinds of stuff about the, about the.
Nothing about the utility issue.
About the utility, anyway, I guess there's stuff about the permitted versus conditional use, I understand that. Anyway, I guess what I'm saying is, is that based on what I'm hearing right now, I would be inclined to stick with conditional. But I'm also not, I'm sorry, I'm not opposed to the idea of finding some sort of middle ground if there is a, if there's a way to filter out. Like if we're essentially saying, you can come say something if you're a community member, I like the idea of being able to have there, that be like a I like the idea of being able to have there, that be like a, a space to discuss how to find a better solution on something. But I also can appreciate the, the sort of NIMBY question. So anyway, I'm just, that, those are the thoughts going through my head.
Well, Gavin, I would, I would submit that, that making it conditional is a middle ground. I mean, there's a lot that's being done by allowing multifamily homes in RA. So I mean, that's a, that's a, there's a lot of mileage there. And I think the happy place is making it conditional use.
I'm not sorry to keep jumping up, but I have something to address.
Sure, sure.
Gavin, that's mitigated, your concern is mitigated by Ohio law. Because the whole body of law in Ohio on conditional uses is that the board can't consider something like, I don't want this next door to me. That's not evidence and it's not considered to be part of the record and it's not what they're allowed to base their decision on. And so if it is conditional use and a planning commission gets, and it's happened to me more than once, they get appealed and it shows in the record that all these citizens showed up and said, I don't want this. And commission said, yeah, we agree. They don't want it, so we're not going to grant it. That gets overturned every single time.
If they appeal it, but yeah.
If they appeal it, yes, exactly. You would have to take that step.
Mary Ann, go ahead.
Yeah, well, I also appreciate hearing from staff. I appreciate the conversation. I, I do think that having it conditional just by the fact of listing it conditional is a barrier and is perceived as a, is perceived as a barrier. I won't say yes. I can tell you that, just a minute. I can tell you that looking at something and conditional, maybe not everyone, but some people are going, oh. They, it can be perceived, whether or not it is a barrier, it can be perceived as a barrier. At the same time, what I'm hearing is that we have all sorts of, or at least a number of issues regarding our utilities, which I believe could apply as much to a single family house on a lot as it could to a multifamily. And therefore, those kind of situations mostly verifying that the utilities are where they need to be, letting a property owner know if they aren't, what needs to happen. Seems to me needs to happen whether it's a single family or a 50-unit apartment. And therefore, and if it could be put in some way so that it was an automatic review rather than coming up to planning commission as a body, I would support that. Okay. But I'm, I'm willing to retract my amendment thing because one, it's not gonna pass.
Not, not right now. And the chair.
And, and I'll tell you where we're going. Okay, so, um, all right, well, I, I want to make sure that I fairly weigh in since everyone else did. All right, so first of all, we're not gonna have public comment tonight, but we have a second reading and the public comment. I, I think that there's some clarity around like the case that needs to be made. So what I will say is I am open to it being a permitted use. I think that there's a way to craft a, a robust utility review. But I'm, I'm hearing, I've, I've heard, I've got a lot of different information in my head. So I, I appreciate Denise, what you've shared, Johnny, what you've shared. And similarly, you know, I appreciate what our village solicitor highlighted about, you know, legal tactics. But I also think if it's permitted, maybe it doesn't happen in the first place. So I think there are different ways that that scenario can plan out. But what occurs to me is that I, I agree with Mary Ann. I, I don't think there's the will right now to pass this. I mean, we can still vote on it or whatever. And like Gavin, I think I need more information. I need to think more about it. But here's the bottom line for me. And it relates to what Kevin said. I would like to do something, which means like allow for more types of dwellings in RA. And, and rather than not have anything happen. And so, so I, I imagine that many of these things are going to be a continuing conversation. But here's what I'll leave it with. I think that clearly if folks wanted to be permitted, we need documents in the packet.
It was in the packet.
The taking stuff was there, John, but I mean, that's.
Two documents. Yeah, sorry. I didn't address this. It was actually in there.
Okay, um, well, I don't, I know. I'll ask council, do you feel like it's productive to continue talking about this tonight or wait for the second hearing? Gavin?
Oh, go ahead, Gavin.
I'd personally like to keep talking about it. I mean, there's obviously some feedback.
All right, so John, come on up.
Yes, so we fully support staff doing a utility review for, on all things that require site plan, just as staff does a review of the stormwater impacts of any development, regardless of whether it's a single family home or anything else. If staff determines that it's going to cost $30,000 or $50,000 to improve the infrastructure, then that's how much it's going to cost. Planning commission's opinion on it, in my opinion, is unimportant. They're not engineers. They're not technical experts. How could they, I, I can't imagine that they really have much to offer. I understand that staff may want more time. If the council is able to do anything to give them more time, that's great. We have no objection to allowing staff as much time as, as they want and as much leeway as they want to make the, these determinations regarding, regarding the utility impacts of developments as well as their impacts on stormwater. That is entirely separate and not the purpose of, of a conditional review hearings, which, which is basically they're, they're for uses which are considered while generally consistent with the district to which they apply, they may not always be appropriate or desirable, which I just don't think applies to multifamily or two-family or townhouses in, say, the low-density district or the medium-density district for that matter. These are exactly the sorts of housing uses that council, as well as the community, has said that we want more of. They are appropriate in the residential districts. Might it be that people may need to spend more to improve the infrastructure in order to make them possible? Absolutely. And I would imagine that the, the village would be happy to allow developers to spend money to upgrade our infrastructure. I understand that maybe they might not be able to afford it, but that is entirely separate from the planning, from the conditional use thing. Like, we support the recommendation that residential use in the industrial district be merely conditional because we agree that that use should be dis-preferred relative to industrial uses in the industrial district. By saying that multifamily uses are conditional while single family is permitted, you are signaling that the single family use is preferred over the multifamily use, which I don't believe actually expresses the position of the community or council. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks, John.
Can I just be clear? So what you, when you're saying that the, is it okay? When you're saying it's in the packet, you're talking about your letter. Is that what you're talking about?
Correct.
Okay, just this idea around like, that's, that's, I read that. I'm just saying the broader, the broader topic, all that was in the, anyway. It was an amendment that you brought up, the idea of there being zoning changes that have been as a result of NIMBYism, this kind of. I'm just making sure I wasn't missing something there, but I definitely saw your letter. I understand that context.
So I think something that was missed, it's been said, and I don't know, it just maybe wasn't emphasized. Yes, whether it's a single family home or multifamily home, when you're doing a new build, you're prone to have the same types of issues. But what our zoning administrator advised us of is RA, for example, was platted such that, you know, the infrastructure was there, it went for this lot, this size lot, so there's a house on that lot. So we're not talking about starting from scratch and either building a single family home or a multifamily home. We're talking about taking a piece of property that was designed to be a single family home. And now that we have potentially the ability to add additional homes on that lot, now you've taken that right-sized infrastructure for that single family home and adding additional properties. That's where you're getting to the problem. That's the problem we're talking about. And that's where the exhaustive review is important. If you are saying to me that you don't want a conditional process, but you want to put an exhaustive review on a permitted process, you've just turned the permitted process into a conditional process in, in the first place. So again, I trust our solicitor, I trust the planning commission, I trust staff. And making this conditional use is not saying no.
Okay, Judith. Yep. It's okay. We're gonna, I mean, we're gonna wrap it up soon, yeah.
Okay, yeah, no, that's fine. Well, I mean, I live in the old section of town and it's RB. And I know RC in parts of RB that are very old. I would not guarantee, I wonder what that infrastructure looks like, you know? So we're saying RA was, I mean, I don't know, you guys know. I think it would be helpful to know what is the difference in the infrastructure in the, in the different parts of town, that it was engineered for RA. It may be bigger lines than what we have in, in the old parts of RB and RC, just to say. But anyway, I just wanted to thank you for looking at these issues. I really appreciate Neighbors for More Neighbors, the, all the work they've been doing and appreciate the, the council members who've been working with them. I think it's time for our village to, by the way, I'm speaking for myself as an individual. I'm supposed to say that. But no, I appreciate you looking at these things and your last, your vote on the last item, I think is really good. New, new property coming in, that it's denser, that it's RC. I think that's great. Why not? And you're starting out with that infrastructure that you know is going to handle that, that level of density. But like I say, rather than just assuming RA has less, the infrastructure is smaller in RA because that was expected to be RA, isn't necessarily the case because I would think some of our old neighborhoods, we know the infrastructure was put in in crazy ways. And, and so before making that assumption, I mean, I would suggest you maybe table this and get more information rather than making, just taking a vote when you're not really sure what you're, where you're at with it all.
Thanks, Judith. Thanks for pointing out the, the assumption piece too. Yeah, we're, we're not gonna take a vote on this because I think there, a lot of things have been brought up. But again, I'll, I'll circle back to because I guess what I thought was clear about what's lacking maybe isn't, so I'm gonna be more clear. So yes, I also read John's email and by the way, I enjoyed your legal memo. I think you should go to law school seriously. But again, what I need to see that has been talked about is that conditional truly creates an obstacle. All right, that's not, that is not here. All right, I, I need to understand, like, I, I believe that that's true, but I need to understand that that is actually the case, especially for Yellow Springs. I also need to understand, you know, again, what is, what is permitted gonna do more? And I know Gavin and I talked earlier about the affordability piece that's been talked about. So I need a more compelling case to, 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 you know, I guess, go out on a limb with permitted. Not that I really think it is a limb. But, but right now, I'm in a position where I, I see some benefits to what's being proposed and, and I want to capture those benefits. And again, we have a second reading where the case can be made and things might change and then we might have four readings or whatever, so who knows? Okay, and Mary Ann, I appreciate you pulling up that amendment. Do you want to retract it or do you want us to vote on it?
No, I retract.
Okay, good, okay. So I think we've had a robust discussion and we're gonna move on to.
Brian, is there anything that you've itemized, two things that you want to see in the, for next meeting? Not from us, but is there anything you want or expect from us? And that goes for all of council. Okay?
No, I guess I would, if I were to ask for something, we heard it already. We heard two of your staff say they don't recall of a conditional use being denied at the end of the day. So I understand the perception issue, but in reality, conditional use is not an, an impassable hurdle.
And it's not gonna be a barrier.
Unless, unless things are not being brought because of that, right? So, I mean, so there, there's still that factor.
I just really want to quickly say that planning commission did appreciate what Neighbors for More Neighbors brought. I mean, obviously, they put multifamily, two-family, single-family attached into the RA code as a recommendation. We're just kind of getting hung up on that P versus the C and I'm sticking with staff's recommendation.
Okay, I'll let Dino say something real quick. Run up here.
Yeah, we'll be right back.
Okay, I'm just kidding.
Dino Palata, I worked at planning commission, Mary Ann, we have, we've worked together. And that was the whole deal with conditional use. It just puts those limits, if you want to put limits on it. I'm all for it. And we did flag polls. We were doing flag poll lots to infill. So we worked around the issues that came up, but that was the whole point of planning commission. You don't want to do away with planning commission by permitting. That's, gives you, I mean, whether you want to do a robust utility inspection, let them do it, or else you just, that, that was the point of planning commission. I think we always worked through that, especially when we were working on infill. So those are the things that we put those restrictions on or we put conditional uses on. And it really made things cleaner, understanding. And, and if people want to come and say, not in my backyard, you know, it, it wasn't gonna stand, you know? That wasn't, that wasn't, that wasn't an argument that was gonna be held up. So that's the purpose of planning commission. That's what really, the conditional use is really, gives you the safety, gives you your safety net. Thanks.
All right, thanks, Dino. Okay, well, sure, we'll have another good discussion. And thanks, everyone. And we're gonna move to resolution 2023, 23. You can do by title only.
All right, this is approving a salary adjustment for Hoseway Salmerone for continued services as village manager.
Did I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Mary Ann, do you want to talk briefly about the process and then?
Yeah, so council had an extensive review process regarding our village manager that involved all of, all council members and all senior staff, 13 people altogether. And we used a standard process to do that. Kevin Stokes and I were the council leads on the process. And during that time, council met in executive session a few times. We also met with Hoseway. And I think as everyone knows, by and large, Hoseway is doing a great job. And that showed up on the evaluation results. And there are some things that we want to work on to strengthen and to increase. And we're very happy to have this guy as our village manager. And so we decided on goals for, this is sort of top of my head. We have our standard 2023 village goals, but we wanted particularly Hoseway to focus on housing, on broadband, on seeing if we can push getting the Vernet property statement of basis finalized, so we can actually use that property. Kevin, let's see, there was also increased collaboration we want with our local businesses, our nonprofits, our schools, our environmental organizations, social justice. Just so many opportunities to be collaborating between the village and local organizations. And Kevin, was there anything?
I think you touched the highlights, Mary Ann.
And so after that, we've met with Hoseway and I would like to recommend a 5% salary increase.
Yeah, and so just to, and that amendment would break it down into 4% cost of living adjustment, which is what we've done for our village team across the board, and a 1% merit increase, which is in keeping with, I think, sort of how we've tried to structure raises and be physically responsible.
And I'd like to add that the, the maintaining consistency with regard to increases that staff receive. It's been Hoseway's practice to ensure that he received increases that were no greater on a percentage basis than staff. If it weren't for that, I think I would be willing to have given him a greater merit increase. But it's, it's been Hoseway's desire to make sure that his increases were in step with what his direct reports receive. And that's why it ended up being 5%. And that's why it ended up being 5%.
Okay, so I think we need a second for Mary Ann's motion.
A second.
Okay.
So, so the, it's, I thought it was, I thought, I thought the 5% was the cost of living, the cost of living adjustment.
That's the 4%, yeah, and then one.
And a 1% merit.
Yep. Okay. Any other comments or discussion? Okay. So first of all, let's vote on the amendment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And secondly, I also want to underscore, I think Mary Ann said it perfectly. Thanks, Hosway. It's great to be here. Having the continuity is, is huge. Your energy is amazing. I think we all remember how you helped to get us through the pandemic. That was really important time, brought a lot of technology. And pretty soon we're all, so we're all going to have high-speed internet for a reasonable rate. Okay.
Thank you, Council.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was just going to say thank you. Thank you. I appreciate working for you guys, working for our community and working with an amazing team to do this together. So thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, we've got Resolution 2023-24, which we can do by title only, Judy.
This is authorizing the village manager to renew health insurance for village employees for the 2023-2024 plan year.
Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, Hosway.
Thank you, Brian. This is a yearly thing that we do. We have to go out of the market and secure health insurance for our employees. For 2023, we budget a potential 8% increase. I'm happy to announce that after some negotiation with Anthem, we were able to get our increase from 8.9% increase on premiums down to 4%. So what's before you is a renewal option to continue the same plan that we have with a 4% increase to our annual premiums, which totals $16,744.80 in total premium increases. That cost is shared between us as the employer and the employee. We contribute 85% of the premiums. The employee contributes 15% of the premiums. I included a breakdown of what that means by the tier service, whether it's a single, single spouse, single and children, and family plan. The other piece to our health insurance plan is a HSA contribution that's designed to meet about half of the deductible of our HSA plan. That is proposed to remain the same because the deductible amounts are remaining the same. So that's the, the renewal option before you. We have the obligation to also share the, what I've included in, in our, in the memo, that there is this other offer that we receive. It is, it, it would ultimately result in an increase to expenses to some of our employees. Ahead of this meeting, we tried to understand what that, that realm of possibility or realm of impact would be for employees due to HIPAA laws. We could not get information to how many employees meet their deductible on an annual basis. The, the details of that proposal are that it shifts some of the expenses from the employer over to the employee. And that shifting of expenses and copays above the deductible limits for the plan. I've included much more information in the memo. Do you have questions of what I've included? Yes, Mary Ann?
Yes, I'm concerned because you also mentioned another healthcare plan, which was the United Healthcare. And I just wasn't quite, which would be less, would be less for the village? An overall cost reduction of 12.4%?
Yes.
The village, so how much would that result in savings to the village totally?
$52,000.
I thought it was $68,000.
And that's the difference between the, the initial premium increase that we received versus what the cost will be with United Healthcare.
And so given our financial situation, why are you recommending the Anthem over the United Healthcare?
Two reasons, and there, there's, there's a third one in there. One, when we budget, we went through the budgeting process, we anticipated the realm of possibility of increases. With, the recommendation is within our budget guidelines that we set for 2023. In reviewing the impact that it would have on the employees to switch plans, one, there's a, there's a change of plans, figuring out whose providers are under the, the proposed new plan. There are some shifts, things that would happen that some employees may not get their prefer providers under a different network. So there's that, that challenge. From a cost perspective, I see the, the dip, the, the impact on the employees in terms of the additional costs and this change of, of providers be in greater detriment than the $52,000 save, the potential savings of the plan. That $52,000 savings comes a bit of an expense by shifting the, the financial burden from the employer over to the employee in, in the form of copays beyond the deductible. Amy, I don't know if I missed anything. Okay.
Can you give an example of what difference that would make? I mean, $50,000 some dollars is significant.
We had an extensive discussion in leadership staff meeting two weeks ago about this. And obviously I came to the side of, you know, we need to save money for the village, but they convinced me otherwise. What it does is you meet your deductible. It's $3,000 for a single, $6,000 for family. And after that, the United Healthcare plan, it's a 20, 50, or 75 copay every time you utilize service. So if someone's going to regular therapies or something like that, somebody has some extensive illnesses, they meet their deductible early, that cost to them could be greater than the savings that, for the village. And it's so, that employee at that point is, is taking the hit for the village. And I feel like we need to be careful with our staff. And I'm one of them. I have single insurance. I never meet my deductible, doesn't really affect me, but knock on wood. But there are a lot of people that do. And so if we start chiseling away their benefits, it's, it's decreasing their salaries. And, and we haven't, you know, we've had enough turnover lately with people leaving the village because of salary changes, that I feel like this is one thing that we shouldn't fight with. And we, we talked about it. I've been in healthcare my entire life. So we know, you know, village has good benefits. And that is one of the things that draws people here.
So Amy, do you, what, 15% of that savings would be savings for our employees?
I don't know numbers per se. We had some HIPAA viol, we can't, we can't get, like, we, we know anecdotally from people like so-and-so meets their deductible. This one's got a this issue, this, you know, we know that we don't have hard numbers. I would say.
But I guess what I mean is if we're reducing, like, you know, so I, I see $68,000 is the number. But I don't know, but then there's other numbers. But is 15% of that $68,000 savings, savings that the employees?
No, the employees are actually voting to pay more to stay on Anthem. They're paying 15% of that increased premium. So the village is taking 85% of it, but the employees are saying, we're willing to pay more to stay where we are, have the coverage we have.
And United is different because?
United would be, my premium would drop if I went to United because the overall premium is less.
Okay, that's, that's what I meant. So there would, there is savings, I guess, on the front end.
Money as an individual by going to United, you know, not only for the village, but for myself and my staff.
Uh huh. Okay. Gavin?
I'll just say, as one of the people whose family meets the deductible very early in the year and has an awful lot of healthcare expenses, the reason why I think we pay a little bit more, all of us, is to cover the people who this healthcare system is 100% broken for. So I strongly support continuing with the, the option that we have now.
I, I agree. I was prepared to argue against United because I was anticipating the proposal being, coming forward to go with United Healthcare because of the savings. And then I was going to say, well, can you take some of that savings and increase what you're putting into the HSA for the employees, sort of split the difference? Having said all that, if, in that the proposal is to stick with Anthem, it really does come down to, and Amy, and you hit the nail on the head, do we do what's best for the company or the employees? And we say that we want to do things, you know, to improve the livelihood of our staff. And so I think sticking with Anthem would be the right way to go.
Okay, any other comments? So my takeaway, you, you can go ahead and sit down, Amy. My takeaway is that there's cost savings with both. All right, and that's, that's why I asked that question about, I mean, if you decrease the overall premium, there's cost savings there. But that being said, my main issue is I don't think we have enough time to make a decision. So I, I guess in the future it'd be good, if we are actually going to deliberate on it to know, you know, because I know you have to know by this meeting.
Yes.
Right.
And unfortunately, just, we received it just two days before we met as a team to, to review it. So, and United Healthcare came to us really last minute. One of the things we discussed internally with, or with our brokers, we're look, we're down the road, we're going to look to change the timing of our health insurance because this May renewal date doesn't really work so well for us versus a December renewal period or January 1 renewal period. So we'll, we'll continue those conversations to find better alignment. So certainly, now we are in a different pool. So we were able to get more bids from more providers. So if this was something that council would be interested in us to keep exploring for next renewal, even within the year, we can certainly keep those conversations going.
Really quickly, I just really, I'm going to hit on what you said, Amy. I thought that I heard you state that employees or staff are willing to take that extra hit to stay with Anthem, is that correct?
Yes. Yeah, the premiums are going up with the Anthem by the 4%.
So for continuity care, for ensuring that you have the same provider and so that you're not paying exorbitant copays, then the general consensus from what I'm hearing is that staff would like to stay with Anthem, is that correct?
At staff meeting, yeah. I mean, we haven't talked to all the staff.
Okay.
I assume you've talked to your staff.
All right. Well, I, from, with, with that and kind of having you come and restate and reiterate, I don't, I would be willing to vote tonight.
Oh, yeah. We're going to vote. We have to, yeah.
Oh, you have to, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so I, and I guess I'll, I'll just wrap it up with, I equally prioritize our team members. And I just want to make sure that, you know, moving forward, we do think about, you know, because I see cost and benefits with both plans. And so as long as it's properly vetted. And I also, I think it's, it's important that we.
I understood what's happening.
That we think about the, our village duties as well. But, but I, you know, I think the bottom line here is that we don't really have enough time to, to make another decision. But just to keep in mind that, yeah, there could be a better plan for everyone out there. Okay. All right, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And so then we've got Resolution 2023-25. We can also do by title only.
This is authorizing the village manager to enter into a 12-month contract with Unum for dental insurance for village employees.
Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
All right, Hosway.
All right, this is a little more straightforward. I should have put, I, I, in my memo I'm looking at, it says slight increases. And 12% is not a slight increase, it's a significant increase. There really is no other viable option for us. This is, it's not a great plan, but it does enough to cover some basic preventative care for our team. So we recommend continuing our, with our dental plan as it is. That's going to cost us 12% more. And now in terms of amounts, we're talking about a individual cover on a bi-weekly basis is $16.
All right, any questions?
It's not a question, but just to say, you know, a 4% increase on the health insurance side is completely reasonable. I mean, within a totally broken healthcare system. And that, so 12% is high in the context of, you know, costs going up on annual basis. But it's, just so everybody's aware, this is totally normal. It's messed up that it's normal, but it's totally normal.
So $16.20, like basically per pay period?
Per weekly per period, yes. That's for an individual. For an employee plus coverage, plus family, is $49.20.
Okay.
That's, you're, you're, but you're not, that's what the village, well, that's what gets paid.
Yeah, that's the total, right.
The employee, the employee shares 15% of that.
Same, same split, correct.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, Resolution 2023-26, we can do by title only.
This is authorizing the village manager to execute a subdividers agreement with Spring Meadows Project 1 LLC.
All right, can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
All right. Hosway, is this you?
Yeah, it's, it's team effort on this one. There's a 15-page agreement in the packet. I try to get that down to two pages. So just to highlight, I'll give you some background. This is the, the development that's proposed for, for the kidney property. We're, it's been approved at Planning Commission. Before it comes to council, we're looking to implement this subdividers agreement that addresses a lot of the conditions brought at Planning Commission, things that we need to ensure are being done. In the, in those improvements, we're talking about full infrastructure improvements need to be, be done and completed in phase one. That includes a lift station and a playground. The subdivider's response is responsible to pay non-refundable fees and deposits for engineering, construction, inspections, and legal fees. The, the agreement also allows the subdivider to construct two model homes before the acceptance of public improvements come to council. The fifth item is, this is with the playground, they commit to $75,000 worth of playground equipment in addition to dedicating the .98 acres of land for open spaces. And finally, the formation of a homeowners association to manage and maintain common areas, including stormwater detention areas. And these are, these are, it's important that a homeowners association be created for these things as these are infrastructure-related activities that are really not within, or our local government to manage. Amy Blankenship, did I miss anything? Okay.
So this is all great and positive, I think. But with the lift, the extra bonus, and correct me if I'm wrong, does this lift station also provide additional support for what might be planned on Glass Farm?
Correct. And I don't know, John, if you want to, want to get, get in on this. One of the things that we ensured in this development is that we have the easements, the road and the infrastructure to support the region, the area around DDC. So we're not making it about Glass Farm, but we want to ensure that we are putting in the right infrastructure for growth so that 30 years down the road, we're not having, we're avoiding some of the conversation from earlier today.
Right, right.
Yeah, so there's multiple easements across the, both abutting properties, the one on East Enid and the one at Glass Farm. And the road infrastructure on Wright Street is made to where if we needed to keep it going, we could. Water remain is out there as well.
All right. That Glass Farm, that's a nice place for an apartment building, I understand.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Okay. All right, if not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. And we'll do Resolution 2023-27 by title only.
This is appointing Megan Leatherman as planning and zoning administrator and economic development liaison.
Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
All right. Hosway, you want to tell us about Megan?
Yes, well, before I get to Megan, let me tell you about Denise. Denise has really aided and elevated our local government to a, a level and performance and quality and all those things that makes us so great locally, internally. So she's done such a good job. Regionally, she's made us recognizable, people want to work with us. And there's so many positive things that people say about me because of Denise. And that's, that's great.
She's doing her job well.
Yes. So I miss her already. And yeah, she had, she's made such a. You know, so I can't, I can't speak with about Megan until I recognize the great work that Denise does and how much she's going to be missed.
Indeed.
And because we were so concerned about how, who could do Denise's job, we went through an extensive advertisement and recruitment effort. We recruited, we interviewed really top talent, not just locally, regionally. But as you can see from Meg's resume from other, other, other states. So Meg is coming to us from city of Austria with a lot of experience in planning and zoning. She's got a master's in, in planning. She's done a lot of community development work. She's got not just a skill set, but the, but the outlook and these personal characteristics to get us to meet our economic development goal and our residential development goals. I'm really excited to, to have interviewed Meg and bring this contract forward to you. Did I miss anything?
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah. Exciting to have somebody from the West Coast. All right.
She's out there with, yeah, you're right.
So her bio and resume are included in the packet. Do you have any questions?
No questions. I'll make a comment. It looks like we've got a contingent of the Yellow Springs Development Corporation here. And I've already broke, broke, broached the subject with Hosway about Megan getting involved in some capacity with the YSTC because of her economic development experience. So we look forward to having an additional resource in that regard. In fact, that was one of the things that Denise even mentioned about Meg when I, when she talked about it. Yeah.
I couldn't believe we got someone like that. In interviewing her, it was just really exciting because where she came from, a lot of the issues that they have there are similar to our issues here. And she also has the environmental science background. She's all about sustainability. It's, and her economic development experience is going to be great.
Yeah, yeah. Major, major win. Good work, guys. Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. 202328, we can also do by title only.
All right, this is authorizing the village manager to submit a purchase order to Insight Pipe Contracting LLC and HGAC by contractor for $248,203.71 for the relining of Senate, select sanitary sewer lines situated in the village of Yellow Springs.
Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay. Hosway?
Yep. Thank you, Brian. We were just talking about infrastructure earlier. So you're no strangers to the conditions of a sanitary system. In fact, if you recall in 2019, when I joined the team, I had a letter from the EPA waiting for me that said we couldn't build anymore because we were meeting, exceeding our, our sanitary flows. We've, we've done a lot of work to that. Johnny and the team's been doing a lot to reduce our infiltration inflow. We've took care of a lot of the low-hanging fruit. Over the last three years, we've been working on more intensive, more involved infrastructure rebuilding efforts, and that includes re, relining the sanitary lines. This is a cost-effective way of extending the life of our sanitary lines without having to dig them up and replacing, replacing them. Relining the sanitary lines is, it can be as good as replacing them at a much, much lower cost. So the, what we're bringing before you is to request your authorization to approve a contract to reline 6,120 feet of sanitary lines. That's about 1.16 miles. And we've gone a bit further this time and just including the list of sections that we're going to reline, and that's for the benefit of council and also to the public that have experience, backflows and all kinds of issues in the system. These are the sections that we find are the next in the priority list that we're going to reline. I've included a memo in the packet. Do you have any questions?
All right. Any questions? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. 202329, oh no, 30.
We skipped 29, huh?
We, yes, we did have to pull 29 off. We'll, we'll see it soon.
All right. Title only.
This is Resolution 202330, authorizing the village manager to execute participation forms regarding the new national opioid settlements with T E V A, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens and Walmart.
Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
All right.
All right. This is a housekeeping item. You previously approved something similar. There are defendants or different parties that are being added to this opioid settlement, which I appreciate, seeing Walgreens and all these other folks taking financial responsibility for the opioid epidemics. And we need your authorization for me to execute these contracts to get some money. We might be getting a little few thousand dollars to do education and other drug intervention efforts.
This is due tomorrow, huh?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other, yeah.
Yeah, really quickly, I read that part of, the, part of the funding can be used for, I mean, if we were to get it, for the hiring of social worker, can be used for drug, like education and outreach. What, what in, what in your mind, you know, would we use the money for if we got it? If we, even if, even if it is just a couple thousand dollars?
Yes. I, it's continuing the efforts that we do. We, we do the drug intervention programs. We have Florence Randolph do case management and outreach services for individuals in our community that had been identified of having special needs or needing special resources.
This is specifically, I'm asking about specifically for the treatment of addiction. Not, not mental health, but for addiction is, is that, what I read feels like to me that it's specifically dealing with not mental health, but the mental health side of addiction and substance misuse.
The, we don't have specific addiction program design for it. Part of the litigation in the efforts to repay communities is to recover costs for services that those communities have had to do. So for us, when we initially applied to be part of the group, we needed to justify what kind of drug activity, intervention activities did we do? And among them, we included the, the application of Narcan. So our officers had documented efforts of Narcan. So those activities is what, what allowed us to be part of the litigation group. In terms of what are we going to use the money for, we, we, initially, we thought about these resources going to community outreach. We did not see that a condition to get the money, that we have to come up with plans for those money because when we joined the litigation group, it was to recover costs in administering Narcan and other addiction services, responding to 911 call and those activities. Amy, did I miss anything? Okay.
I need to revisit, I need, I should just probably revisit that. I mean, it's important that if we get money, no matter how much it is, that it's specifically for addiction services, period. I mean, and it would be really nice to see someone who has experience with dealing with people who struggle with addiction specifically. Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll think about that.
Two cents.
Keep the conversation going.
All right. Any other questions, comments? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And finally, 202331, can do by title only.
This is authorizing the village manager to seek a grant award from the US Department of Agriculture for funding known as the Rural Innovation Stronger Economy Grant.
All right. Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay.
All right. I think we can tag team this one, right?
Sure.
The, I think you all know that Yellow Springs has been known for business incubation spaces. That's really what's made this town. For a couple of years now, we've been talking about what does a rebirth of an innovation center, a startup center will look like. And the conversation became much more intentional when we acquired, when we regained possession of the old school board building. And that kicked off several meetings about, okay, what, what other economic development activities we could do. So we've been in conversations with Economic Development Group out of Dayton, and they brought this project to us. It's low effort and low cost to us as there is no cash contribution for this project. If we're successful, we'll, we'll be awarded $500,000, up to $500,000 from USDA to invest in the creation of this innovation center that will focus on 3D printing technology. The, the timing, I think, works great for us now because just about 16 miles from us, the Honda EV plant broke ground in February. We've have a partner in part of this partnership that includes IC3 Printing, who as a business already has partnerships with Honda to produce parts for Honda. And they're, they're based near Columbus. So this partnership works great for us to secure funding to invest in our local community while also being future oriented and seeing how this can create either a pipeline for workers for the Honda plant and other manufacturing in the area, or it's creating entrepreneurs that can become suppliers for Honda and others. Did I miss anything, Brian?
No, I think you covered it well. So, yeah, it's a great opportunity. Also, the 3D printing, you know, area gets into manufacturing housing. So that was one of the things that was brought up as well. And they're very interested in recycling plastics for materials and whatnot. So, yeah. Mary Ann?
This is an area where I know about nothing. So I'm, I, I'd like to understand a little more about why 3D printing was chosen because it's not, I mean, partly it looks like, well, this is a sort of an incubator, but that's not it. You have a particular focus. So can you say more about the value of what 3D printing is, the value, why it would be a good fit for here? I've heard what you just said, but it still doesn't quite come together.
Yes. And I think of it, there, that there's some synergies, if you will, in the background. One of them is that 3D printing in rural communities is a hot topic and something that USDA indicated being a priority area for the grant. So it would score well. It would.
Why?
It would score well because it's, it's upskilling a labor force and, and moving into that technology-based jobs. So from, from my understanding of, of the criteria is that a project like this would score well. And it, the project being focused on a particular product and outcome creates the basis for investing in the innovation fund, or creating the innovation center. So instead of applying for, let's create an innovation center here, we're saying we want to build capacity for 3D printings here. And the, by default, you have to build that infrastructure for an innovation center. The other synergistic opportunity that's happening is that there's a partner at the table, ICD, IC3 Printing, that is already in the business space, provides printers, provides training and has business relationships for 3D printing. So there's a business venture there for the partnership or for, for individuals that come out of, that could be trained out of the program and help establish enterprises. I would be remiss if I did not include that there are members in the audience, particularly Lisa Abel, who joined us in our last conversations on this project too. And there, there've been some community members involved. But did I answer your question, Mary Ann?
Well, one, one thing to emphasize is this grant is about jobs. So, yeah. So opportunities to create jobs in rural areas through these innovation centers is, is a big priority.
Jobs that, I mean, you can have jobs about all sorts of things. So why is this a good fit? Now, is the material that gets used plastic? Is it always plastic? Can you help me understand that?
One of the, one of the tracks that we discussed as a group is that there is an opportunity for recycling plastics to turn into filaments that would be used in 3D, in the 3D printing process. And there's also an educational track as part of the training that would expose the students to creation of plastic filaments through the added value agriculture process. So taking corn and stripping the starch out of corn to turn it into a, a, a plastic filament made out of corn.
Were there other kind of job, were there anything?
The projects that they brought to us were two 3D printers and a wind tunnel. But a wind tunnel wasn't for the grant.
Who bought this? USDA or?
No, the, the folks that reached out to us are with the Dayton Entrepreneurship Center. And they saw some of our, the article in the Dayton Business Journal about Yellow Springs being open for business, which profiled Cresco, which talked about the chamber, which talked about a variety of things. They saw that and reached out to us and said, yeah. So it was pretty cool. Yeah. So we met at Coactive and they've talked to Mark, who owns the Coactive. I think maybe Mark Heis has been in the mix, Lisa Abel, some other folks, Antioch College. Jane was at the last meeting and that was, she was really excited. So, but yeah. But they saw that we might be a community that had space and the right kind of values for this.
And, and are you suggesting that the old library be the space?
No. Antioch has offered to host us the center.
Can I just, can we ask Florence if this is relevant to this topic right now? Or she had her hand up for quite a while?
Um, no, it was when they were, Carmen was talking about the funds for the, the drug funds. And they want us to go in collaboration. And we've been doing that just because, you know, we deal with people who are not showing signs immediately of drug use. It goes hand in hand with the mental health. So that's why those funds would be used in partnership with TCN and Deco and those places who are helping both the mental and the drug use for this.
Okay. Thanks, Florence. Okay. Anything else on the RISE grants? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Citizen concerns. This is the time on the agenda where we entertain comments up to three minutes about any topic that is not on the agenda. Any citizen concerns? All right, Cory's just repositioning. All right.
Hope you're more comfortable now.
Okay. All right.
Wait, are we not getting a wind tunnel then?
I think we already have one.
Okay.
Hold on, if nobody's gonna do it, I got a citizen concern.
Okay.
Don Beard with Peaches, Trail and the Import House. So it just became something I found out, you guys have a new special event fee. Is this what I'm hearing?
It has not.
Hosway?
It has not been.
Are you familiar with this?
It has, yes.
That's actually on, that's actually on the agenda.
Oh, this is on the agenda tonight?
Yeah. But we, we don't, we don't have anything yet. So we're talking about it tonight. So.
Bingo. All right.
All right, cool. Patty, did you have something?
Well, I, I just wanted to thank all of you for being on council.
Oh.
I mean, it's a lot, a lot of work. I've been to a few of the meetings and I just wanted to say that.
Oh, thanks, Patty.
Thank you.
Nice to hear. Okay. Any other citizen concerns?
I want to reiterate, that was very nice to hear. Anyone else who's listening, it's nice to hear.
Ryan over here.
Uh, yep. Riley?
What's the court? Yes. Riley Dixon, Yellow Springs News. This is probably going to be an unorthodox question, but I'm working on an article right now about a new business in town, Y S Scooter. And there will be a lot of e-scooters moving through town soon. I know a lot of municipalities around the world have regulated this industry before. And I'm curious to know if the village of Yellow Springs might intercede in some way? And at what point the village might intercede? So.
All right.
That's all.
Great question. I don't really think we have an answer for you right now. So, all right. But, but you are correct that micro mobility devices are certainly. But you are correct that micro mobility devices are certainly, there are policies around how those work. And interesting to see. Okay, anything else? All right, so we're going to move into the manager's report.
All right, I will start off with text message that I got related to your question, Carmen. We are working with a, what's called a drug court program. That's in partnership with PD and the mayor's court to redirect some of the drug-related offenses in the court system to come back to the local level and do a more restorative work with those individuals.
Like a diversion?
Yes. So Paige and Mayor are working on that program. So there'll be more details to come on that. I've included my manager's report, probably what's going to be the last COVID update as part of the manager's report. The pandemic isn't fully over, but most jurisdictions are moving away from reporting the weekly or the bi-weekly numbers. So we'll take that down for the manager's report. There were a lot of activities, as you can see from all the memos and all the other legislation that's happened with council. I'll hit on a couple of highlights for administration. Johnny's team's almost fully on board now. We just got one more employee to recruit and hire. We brought on six people. So we moved up from a team of one in Public Works. So that's going well. Obviously, you approved the contract with Megan Leatherman. So we're heading in a good direction with staffing. I've got a couple of other technology updates there. We're buying our Dell equipment. We're going to be exploring the Office 365 platform for some of our employees. And we'll look to try that out and see if we can make that transition sometime this year. Are there other things in the manager's report? Is there anything I can answer? Any questions you may have?
Mary Ann wanted you to talk about the housing committee.
I have a question, and now I'm looking in your report. I can't, I thought you did make a report on the housing.
I did, I did. I'm sure it's in there.
Yeah, Gavin did one, and also, well, Hosway did the memo about the.
Page 142 on the packet.
142, oh, way down. Okay, well, I will.
Since the creation of this memo, I shared with you the proposal to update our conceptual plan. And that happened after I wrote my housing report. So that would be an update for next meeting.
So I'd like to state a concern that I have. First of all, we have indicated that we want rental or primarily rental. I have a concern that doing rental and having an income expense flow that works and having the rental be affordable to moderate will be very, very difficult. And I'm concerned that before we start looking at site plans or we start looking at site plans, that we reach out and get some information about that. If you recall that when Ober was going to do their development at the south end of town and they were asked about rental, they said something like, well, yeah, we could do rental, but we'd be charging $1,500 a month for a unit. I think they were not exaggerating. I'm deeply concerned that we might create some kind of site plan that says, oh, we want this number of rentals. And then we start digging into what it will take to do rental and we find out, whoa, this ain't going to work. So I am suggesting that our first step be to use whatever consultant's resources we have to find out what is really going to be, what's it going to need to take to do rental? And, you know, if it's going to take subsidy from state or federal home loan bank or the feds or whatever, then we have to look at what that means. Unless we have some really deep pockets of private money that can put private money into it and say, thank you for doing this. We'll pay 50% of the cost. So that's my concern, that I don't want us to get down the road of like, oh, this is a really cool project, and then find out we can't.
So, and actually, I mean, kind of related to that, and then Carmen, have you talked next? So Gavin, it was your report of your minutes, right, that I saw? Okay, all right, so was whatever was attached to the housing committee, who did that? Did you do that? Okay, I don't know why I saw Gavin's name on it. So I saw the comment about the concept plan. And I want to make sure that the idea is that, so the housing committee is going to work on a proposal for an RFP for that or what? Is that what that means?
That was part of the proposal that Mary Ann brought forward to council to reengage the Housing Advisory Board with specific goals.
Right, so that was the charge was last.
That was the charge, right.
So what I want to make sure, and it's kind of related to what Mary Ann said, is that before we do any activity around the concept plan, that it comes back to council. So either in the form of a proposal or an RFP or something. Because I want us to think about, how do we build it? Potentially, if we can find a consultant, like tool design, that can also like help us understand how we can fund it. So I just want to make sure that before we do anything, that we kind of look at what we're actually going to pay for.
So, and I think that we are several conversations away from getting to the point of a building concept for a particular outcome. The initial, the concept we're talking about updating is the Glass Farm overall as a development site to reflect the DDC development. And so that's a priority. Once we get into a Glass Farm specific conversation, it's really going to hinge on what are going to be the priority areas that we identify in the mandate from council to explore. And those are topics that we have not done a deeper dive yet. And we expect to do it over the next several meetings. Gavin and Carmen, is that your understanding on how we'll key those conversations about the priority and the mix of rental units and what price points you're envisioning? But I think those are conversations that will be had well into the future of this project.
I mean, yes, and I find this really helpful, meaning Mary Ann and Brian sharing thoughts. I mean, we have some ideas. I mean, we had one one-hour meeting, so this is good. I would be interested in what your take is, particularly on this question of, when would we start looking into the cost equation questions? I don't, we didn't talk about that yet. It's a good thing to ask about. But we could either do it now or later.
We didn't have any discussion about that. Not really, not in any depth. One of the things that kind of gets thrown around with this idea of affordable is like, what does that mean for the people who are renting? And that is 30%. That's like, that's the number, 30% of your gross is what your rent should be, according to the Section 8 system, according to the government. So that's the 30%. Now, how we can get there and build something that's going to be cost-effective for the village? Don't know yet. But I think this is something that we are going to discuss. This doesn't really feel like putting the cart before the horse to me because we're really early in the discussion. So I think that, you know, I would agree that it's kind of several meetings down the road. But what has been expressed here is affordable housing and even Denise, apartments, apartments, apartments. So that's what I am going to concentrate on. That's what I'm committed to.
I will just reiterate, I think that is going to be the most difficult thing. It's having, and I understand what affordable means and all of that. But, I mean, that's one, there are a lot of reasons why we don't have rental, along with community prejudice, the big one. But the other big one, well, another big one is you have to have the capital, but then it has to cash flow. And I think that that's, I read an article recently in San Francisco. They build an affordable apartment for $400,000 per unit, how much it costs. Now, that's San Francisco. But it's just so hard to make it work, I think, that I think that we need to have that reality checked real early.
I think there's a lot, I mean, just my, you know, once again, like, there are a lot of opportunities for funding because of where we are, because we're in a rural community. And so, I mean, yes, we need to think about these things. Of course, you need to think about these things. But I don't want to, I don't want to get stagnant in our like moving forward with this. There are going to be unanswered questions. This is kind of uncharted territory for the village. But I don't want that to inhibit us from moving on this.
Well, this is one area that I have some experience. Again, it's been a decade since I did it, but I know how hard it is to do. And once you start, and funding is not, there is a lot of funding, but nowhere near the need. That's part of the problem. So I don't want to stop the process, but I don't want the process, I don't want us to have some pie in the sky idea and then go, wow.
Yeah, yeah. Well, thank you for that, Mary Ann, and we'll certainly keep those conversations going. We are trying to honor the mandate that council set, Housing Committee, Housing Advisory Board, go do this. And among them were to look at Glass Farm as a whole. So there's, what you're talking about is more at the smaller level. And so if that needs to be adjusted, then that's a conversation we need to have if we're thinking too big with what is over 20 acres of land.
Yeah, I mean, but with the charge being specifically on residential development, yeah, I think the upshot is just because every council member expressed interest in being on that housing committee, we want to make sure that we're doing check-ins and getting everybody's perspective as we move forward. And I think that can, you know, keep the momentum going and just make sure the ideas are solid.
And we'll continue to make the reports.
Yep, yeah, no, I thought that was a good report out. Thanks. Okay. Anything else on the manager's report? Okay, then we are going to move into old business. And we have a request from Yellow Springs Home, Inc. That involves two components. One is investing in the project with cash. And the other is related to tap fee waivers. So I know the housing committee discussed it. We got a memo about that. Hosway, do you want to, I guess, maybe just highlight the main things?
Sure, I think you're familiar with the Cascade project. I know some of you have attended those presentations. So we won't talk about the project, we'll talk about the request. The initial request was for $40,000 contribution plus the waiver of zoning and tap fees. The memo that I put before you, I think emphasizes the importance of making investments in these types of projects. And I believe that I've made a recommendation to fully honor the request that Home, Inc. has put forward, and that is for $40,000. I've broken up my recommendation in two forms. One is, in both are cash contributions. One is in the direct cash payment to Home, Inc. in the amount of $18,040. And the second portion of it is, it's also cash payment, and that is to reimburse the village for sanitary sewer line relining work that took place to support the project. I think the team going the extra distance to ensure that that sewer line was relined under a previous project under secure pricing emphasizes or shows that there's support for this project from our end. So in a nutshell, recommendation is to honor the $40,000 request, $18,000 in direct payment to Home, Inc. Upon verification of funding for their project and a almost $22,000 payment towards the village on behalf of Home, Inc. to reimburse the village for the sanitary sewer lining. And I've included some information on the tap fee. Tap fee estimates right now is two. We don't have enough information to fully evaluate the request. We've done some estimates based on treating the units as individual single units. And as you can see, that the tap fees can get significant. We're looking at almost $500,000 of tap fees and capital projects to support this development. I'll take any questions.
It's actually, Emily, I'm going to have you guys come up. And Emily wanted to clarify the tap fee waiver request piece.
Hi, I'm Emily Seibel, Executive Director of Yellow Springs Home, Inc. And before we get to this, I did just want to say that I agree with Mary Ann that the rental housing development can be very, very difficult. That's why we're here. Of the $2 million needed to build eight units and have them be affordable for an initial period of 15 years, two persons making an average of less than 60% of very median income, we're able to support permanent debt of $125,000, which means we have to fundraise the rest. There are not sources, without being very creative, turning over every rock, digging in deep, and that's why we're here. But if we can do anything to be helpful with financial modeling, performance, et cetera, please don't hesitate to let me know. So in terms of our request for this project, I said at the last council meeting, and I will just reiterate that even though we're not legally obligated to pay for the sewer relining from 2019, we understand that that was a cost that would have to be incurred now and that Johnny did us a favor by moving forward with the work. I do have an issue with it being referred to as outstanding debt because we do not have a debt to the village. We didn't even know the work had been done. And so I just, I would like to clarify that. But we are willing and committed to paying it because it's the right thing to do. We value our partnership with the village. And we would be incurring this cost if the village hadn't done that work and it would cost more now. So to us, that's what a good partnership looks like. So we're happy to pay it. I'm fine with the $40,000 being allocated in that way. But we also are asking for tap fee waivers for the first eight units, phase one. And I realize that we are still waiting on some information about exactly what that means in terms of expenses. I just saw the memo this morning, so I haven't had a chance to gather the information that you've requested. But it won't be $500,000. That includes a utility pole moving, which we are wanting to talk about at a later time. And also the tap fee waiver request estimates that are in there, as Hosway said, are, I think, are lacking all of the engineering data and input. But that's also for the, an estimate for all 32 units. And we're asking for eight units consistent with every project we've done in the 13 years that I've been with Home, Inc. The tap fees have been waived. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to respond.
All right. Mary Ann?
So just, I just want to be clear. I know, it is my understanding that the $40,000, of course, is valuable in and of itself. But it also is, it shows your other funders that we have skin in the game.
Yes.
So does that still hold true if we're paying you $18,000 and then pay, I don't know how the $21,000 is going to work. I'm just concerned about how that $40,000 is done so it works best for you.
Yeah, I mean, if it's paid directly to the Village Social Enterprise Fund, then it would not be a project expense. We would, because it wouldn't pass through Home, Inc. So it would just be, our expenses are reduced by $22,000 and the village transfers money from the Affordable Housing Fund to the Enterprise Fund. If it passed through us, we would claim both the income and the expense. I think there's a benefit to showing, being able to show the income because it shows that there's a little bit more skin in the game from the village. And we're competing with, you know, statewide for maybe two or three funded projects in this fiscal year through the Ohio Housing Finance Agency. So it is highly competitive.
So are you saying that for you, it would be better if we paid you the $40,000 and then you turned around and paid the village the $21,000?
I think so, yeah. But however you need to structure it is fine. Yeah, but however you need to structure it is, I'm fine.
The one thing I'm interested in is what I heard you say about the tap fees. So for all of the other projects, you've been director for how long?
I'd prefer not to say, no, I'm just kidding. No, since 2011. And then I started working at Home, Inc. in 2009.
So up until now, Home, Inc. hasn't had to pay those fees. Is that what you?
Yeah, I mean, I didn't even include them in the budget. So the $2 million price tag includes donated land at zero cost and no tap fee or zoning fees.
The tap fee, the tap fee piece is new for Home, Inc.?
If we had to pay it, it would be the first time.
Okay.
In, in my working memory.
Okay.
Yes.
First of all, Hosway, is, can we move the numbers around to tell a better story?
There's, there's some accounting finessing that needs to happen and not so much of it on our end. There's, I'm sure that there could be an accountant that would say, yeah, just put the money out and have it come back to us and then it all zeros out. But I'm sure there could be another accountant that would say otherwise. So I don't know, Amy Blankenship or Amy Kemp? Or any thoughts? Because if I understand your question is to make the numbers look better, give the money to Home, Inc. and then have it come back to us.
I don't think there's any harm in doing it that way at all. If the $40,000 check goes to Home, Inc. and then they send us cash back in. Otherwise, we could just move from fund to fund with council approval anyway, so. But if it helps them, I don't see a harm in it.
And so I suppose we could break up the transaction in two, and two transactions. One is the payment for the sewer lining. Have that go out and come back to us. And that resolves that one payment. And then the other becomes available upon securing grant approval for the project to move forward. That way, there wouldn't be any money lingering out until it's necessary.
Agree. I mean, there's probably conditions to use on that other $18,000 that need to be fulfilled before we would give that money over to Home, Inc.
So, but that sewer relining was done, it's my understanding, on the premise that there was going to be a 52-unit project happen, which didn't happen. So if for some reason, Home, Inc. did not get approval for this project, I don't see a rationale for them having to pay for a sewer relining that they didn't even know was done.
Johnny, do you want to?
I would not, it was not on a tight priority to do. But if anything gets built onto that facility, it needed to be done. And they agreed to pay for it. Now, that's that little bit of a tap fees. I know that they're asking for tap fee waivers for eight units. But just like any other development, if you're going to build 32 houses, you're not going to start with a four-inch pipe. And then after you build the next eight, you're not going to come back and take that four-inch pipe out to put in a six-inch pipe. And then when you build another eight, you're not going to come back and take out that six inch to put in an eight inch. So when you develop a property like this for 32 units, you have to start with the proper size, size for 32 units, electric, water, and sewer. So therefore, your tap fees can't be based on eight units. Your tap fee has to be based on 32 units because that's what you're going to install to get it onto the property. So a regular house is four inch. You might be able to get three or four houses on a four inch. But they're going to have to set a manhole on their property and probably take out an eight or a 10 inch into the sewer main. They would own the manhole on their property. But they're going to be tapping a 10 inch into the sewer for the street. So therefore, when you guys are talking about tap fees, you're not looking at a four inch to feed eight houses. You're looking at a 10 inch to feed 32 houses. You're not talking about a three-quarter inch water line for one house. You're talking about probably a four inch, possibly six inch, to feed 32 houses because that's what it's going to take to complete all 32 houses. When you're talking about utility poles, same thing. You're not going to just put number six wire and feed eight houses. You're going to size it to where you're feeding all 32 because you don't want to have to keep coming back and digging up what you just did. That's the reason why I said we need more engineering from their side before I can even determine on what size tap fees that they're asking to be forgiven.
One of the things that's sticking out the most for me is, Emily just stated that they didn't put that in the budget because they'd never been charged for it in the past. So that's sticking with me. Now, yes, I understand what you're saying completely. Absolutely, absolutely. And also, I think that it's important that we give everybody the opportunity to be prepared for stuff like this. And if they haven't been charged and then, and then there's like, there's, now there's a fee. You know what I mean? Like, I know why there has to be a fee. I understand that. I understand that the village is not trying to eat, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars. But it's, it's, it's just, that part for me is a little funky considering they've, they've never had to, to account for the tappies before, if that's accurate. Is that, is that accurate?
Well, I, I believe staff have, in every case, recommended that those tappies not be waived. The council has overridden that staff recommendation. So you watching the smoke on the horizon?
Okay.
So, you know, we, last meeting, we, we agreed to pay, what? How many hundreds of thousands of dollars to paint the water tower? Because that's important. At this meeting, we agreed, we agreed to pay over $50,000 more for our health insurance for our staff because that's important. For over three decades, we've said affordable housing is important. And we have only one organization in town that's doing it. And hey, if we had more than one, I'd be really happy. And hopefully, everyone else would. And then they could be competing with each other. And until we have more than one, either we say affordable housing, we're going to say it, but no, no, we're going to keep saying it. But it really is. Or we're going to help see that it can happen. And I, I, actually, I don't totally understand what you were saying because I don't know how all that works. I guess I just thought there'd be a line for each particular house. And so maybe some more work needs to be done on that. But if we're going to say we want affordable housing, then let's support the organization that's doing it.
Well, I'll speak up at this point, certainly to echo Mary Ann's comments. And, you know, we do say that housing is important to us. And any house over any roof for any people is important. So, and to Mary Ann's point, you know, you've heard me say Bob the Builder. If Bob the Builder was coming here building stuff, we'd support him too. So I, I think we, council has, in the past, put our money where our mouth is. And I'm just advocating that we continue to do so with regard to supporting affordable housing. Now, with regard to the tap fees, I agree it's important to have what the number is. I mean, if we're going to, if we're going to forgive the tap fees, we need to know what that number is. I don't think getting the big number, I don't want to go back to the conditional use kind of thing. But just like conditional use doesn't mean no, getting the whole number doesn't mean no. And, and once we have the number and all the engineer, maybe we could talk about forgiveness in phases. You know, but we're, but what, what would eventually be forgiven would be all or a portion of the whole thing, whatever the whole thing is. So I think it's not a bad idea to have the right number. And again, there's a set, then we have the conversation about, well, how much of that number will we forgive? So I think doing, doing that work now does not mean no. But we do have to, like I said before, put our money where our mouth is with regard to affordable housing. Because every, I often, I often say housing, just housing in general. But since we are now talking about affordable housing in particular, you know, if we, if we are going to say that that's part of our goals, I think we need to do something meaningful to back that up. Whatever that is, whatever that is. And I 100% appreciate the $40,000 being given to Home, Inc. And for anyone who questions why we're giving, and I've said this before, why we're giving all $40,000 to Home, Inc., I will take personal responsibility for not asking for $120,000. And then that way, we'd only be giving Home, Inc. one-third of what we put on the budget. It just so happened that we only asked for what we knew was, was, was going to be on the table. And, and I'll take responsibility for that. And I'll, I'll relieve the mic at this point. Thank you.
Kevin, did you want to say anything?
No, you can go ahead.
Okay. All right. So the first part of what Kevin said, you know, which I want to emphasize is that the village has a long track record, ever since I've been on council, of supporting affordable housing. And I don't remember us ever saying no to any request, actually. And I think the requests have been well-presented, have been reasonable. But I think I want to pull it back because I think we've already got a recommendation on the $40,000, which I think everyone's mostly comfortable with, besides the question you had, Mary Ann. And so the other thing we need to decide so that the funding request can go in is tap waivers for the first eight, right? So that's, that's the other urgent decision that we need to decide tonight.
I don't think we have a number, that's, that's the thing.
Right, we don't have a number.
Right, and from what Johnny said, you can't just do the first eight. I mean, in theory, theoretically.
Right, but all we're doing, all we're doing is saying that, that we are committed to that. We're not, there's no transaction that's going to happen until next year at the earliest.
So Johnny, can I ask a question? Is, so the first aid is one-fourth of the whole thing. So are we, when we say Phase One or the first eight, are we effectively saying one-quarter of whatever the big number is?
I don't, I'm not wavering either way. I just want to have what is expected before you say yes. I could be off. It could be a million dollars. And if you five decide that a quarter of that is $250,000, that is your guys' s. I'm giving you the information. If a homeowner come by and ask me the same question, I would say, I need further plans to be able to give you an accurate cost if it's in a backyard. I'm just something to say, ah, yeah, about $30,000. I need more information. And I've asked them for the engineer. I had a conversation with the engineer. I need to know what it is before I can come to council and say, it's going to be $378,000. And then you five can decide on how you want to do it. At the end of the day, when it's waived, the enterprise funds will be replenished. If I'm up, is that correct? That the general fund will then pay the enterprise funds?
That has been our ask in the past is that the tap fees, while they're being waived to Home, Inc., they are a hard cost for the enterprises. And the last tap fees, they were paid to the enterprises. So the enterprise ultimately need to recover that cost. And that tends to come from general fund and as, as an expenditure from the general fund to the corresponding enterprises for the tap fees. So that would be an expense on council's side.
Sure.
Thank you. Yeah, so we, our architects did meet with Johnny and Denise. We have not yet engaged a civil engineer. In my ignorance, Johnny, I thought that the tap fees were fixed, as they have been for other projects. So it wasn't until relatively recently that I understood that it had to be calculated in this different way because of the nature of this project. In the past, it's been pretty straightforward. The tap fees are this much per thing. And we have a separate aid to construction expense that we have budgeted for and would pay for. And then we, and then the tap fee and zoning fees were waived and fixed. I understand that's not the case now. I just, I wish we had, I, I wish we could go back in time because we first came to you in November of 2022 with this request. We had a runway. We asked to have a meeting with, with a joint meeting to go through some of these details. And now, you know, we need to finalize the budget for Phase One so that we can go in to get funding to move forward. So our runway has gone from, you know, this far to about this far. I did, then when I got the housing memo this morning, I called our architect and said, how quickly can we get a civil engineer under contract? Because we don't have one yet. We just have the estimates. We have a meeting on Thursday to talk about it. But I just, I don't know how quickly we can get everything finalized. But I understand that's an important part of the process. It just, yeah, I guess, it's just frustrating because we have tried to be very proactive and get way out ahead of this.
But what is your, what is your timeframe now in terms of when you need to have this?
So we're actively fundraising right now for the project phases. There are a lot of different moving parts. We're getting updated construction numbers. They did go up 30%. That has a huge budget impact, obviously. We're spot checking that. And then in June is when we go to the Ohio Housing Finance Agency to begin the application process. We need to have all sources and uses finalized at that time for Phase One specifically. And that means if there's an expense that we didn't know we were going to have to budget for, we have to find a way to cover it. And it throws the budget off. So, I mean, I really, I have a lot of sympathy for your position. I'm not trying to like force anything without the information that you need. It's just, we're in kind of a tight spot and I don't know how to, how to move forward, given that it sounds like the Phase One tap request waiver is more complex than eight units. It's looking at the whole thing. And I know, I think, Johnny, we did talk a little bit about splitting it into two. You know, the homes along Marshall Street being one and then the 22 taps being the other one. But yeah, I think we're still pretty preliminary in those conversations.
Emily, can I, this might be the most ignorant question on the planet. When you go to OFA for funding, if you knew that your tap fees were going to be making it up, $300,000, and the village had indicated to you that we would be willing to cover 15% of whatever those tap fees are, would you not then be applying to OFA for the other? Or is that not something that they cover? Because you're talking about having to put this budget together to, to apply.
Yeah, so we've, so far, we've raised funding commitments for about $750,000 of the $2 million needed. Typically, OFA likes to fund 50% of the total development cost. So even without the tap fees, we've kind of reached that max already. In the past, they've had exception requests for non-participating jurisdictions, which we are one, to go over 50%, but they removed it from the draft guidelines, as you all know. Thank you for sending letters. And then we, they were supposed to have a multifamily committee this week to talk about the guidelines. And then they didn't have quorum. So now we're not going to find out until later what is actually in the final regs. And it's, of course, a gamble to go in with an exception request. It makes your project less competitive. So of course, no easy answers because it's affordable housing development. But we would, regardless of your process tonight, I mean, I think it's really clear that we would be very interested in additional collaboration to get out ahead of this kind of stuff for the rest of the project and moving forward.
Okay, other questions or comments?
I want to make a comment.
Yes, Denise?
Because you mentioned what we've, what we've written off the four. And I think with the 54 unit, it was going to be a waiver of the tap fees because those were all apartments that were going to be affordable. For Glen cottages, I think because there were some for-sale homes, I think you ended up doing the tap fees for the rental units that were going to be under Home, Inc.'s control. But then I think tap fees were still paid on, correct me if I'm wrong, on the. No, I thought that was split up, but we'll go back and check. So I'm just saying, there might be a different scenario. Because I think in this, I think Stage Four, Phase Four is going to be the for sale, right?
Getting complicated. So yeah, the other thing I would add is just, when we went back and looked, and I think, Denise, I think they were waived for all of them. And I think Denise, I think they were waived for all of them. I could be wrong. I know we had an aid to construction fee. And then I think we came in with each grant application to ask for waivers on the tap fees because we did get Federal Home Loan Bank funding and we got points for that. Well, well, we didn't have any that were sold at fair market value. Maybe, maybe the, there were two that were like a little bit higher AMI. So maybe we'd have to go back and look. Yeah. But the other thing I would just say is that when we, in the past project, I went back and looked at our incentive application for the fifty four unit tap fee waiver. And it was tied, when council granted it, for all fifty four units. And it was tied to the commitment to reline the sewer. So they went together in the this, the former iteration of this, if that is helpful.
Okay. Can I, so it seems like we all acknowledge that there's, like, if we need to put in a, whatever, a larger pipe for the various taps, that we want to do it now, not put in one pipe and then dig it all up and put another pipe and so on and so forth. And I assume that there wouldn't be any application where you would put the entire cost of a thirty two, like you'd break it up somehow, right? So I'm just wondering, like, is there some way to do? And also, we're not talking about any budget impact this year. We're talking about next year and then as part of a one quarter of a larger pro. I'm just wondering, is there some way to find somewhere in the, like some stepping stone without having to commit to? I think what I'm hearing, unless there's somebody who's going to tell me their, I think I'm hearing several honest brokers. I think I'm hearing people that are saying, hey, we tried to come here in November. They did. Our budget process was a little messy, right? I think we would have liked to have had a more substantive conversation about how we're prioritizing and investing in affordable housing. We were trying to figure out a lot of stuff. We didn't get there. I think they tried to come and talk about it to some degree. I don't think at that point anybody was like, tap fees are off the table. I don't, I mean, we didn't have any substantive discussion about it, period, really. Um, and you're bringing up, I think staff's bringing up reasonable question. We're doing this with the event piece, too. We're trying to figure out how we're right sizing essentially our internal capital V village costs and the things that we're giving to, you know, outside entities. So I guess I'm just, it seems like we need to talk some more. Is there some? It sounds like it's going to be hard to get the exact answers to the information on the timeline. But is there any, can anybody see like, uh, could we commit to something that makes it so you can get the application in? That's a some portion without there being a, because honestly, it sounds like you got a, there's a whole bunch of hurdles to jump. Even if we get this figured out, it's still a bunch of hurdles to get figured out. Is there something we can do to keep ourselves in the game? And then work out the stuff that obviously we should have worked out before, but that I don't think anybody did on purpose?
Well, nobody was the champion to make that meeting happen either. So, um, so anyway.
But that, but that isn't, I mean, that's a, that's on us, right? I mean, like, they did ask for a meeting, like, the fact there isn't a champion is not, it's not their fault. Now, could they have asked again or more? I suppose so. But like collectively, we're in, there's, there's multiple responsibilities.
I think we've definitely learned that it's a lot more complicated now than it has been in the past. And so then, and that's why I think instead of talking about, like, put our money where our mouth is, we need to learn that there needs to be some planning on the front end. So yes, we should have done that in the fall. Um, but I don't think any of us knew. I mean, the sticker shock, to be honest, like, I mean, when we talked about this, this is, uh, and so while yes, we need to support this, I I'm not sure that there's a never ending, you know, amount that we support. So I mean, we got to recognize that, too. Um, well, I think it comes down to either we're prepared to commit to eight tap fee waivers or I guess we're not. I mean, I think that's, unless, I mean, that's Emily, what you indicated to me. But if you've got some other.
No, I was just going to say, I mean, we can get as much information together as as we can. I don't, but you know, I mean, the stuff is, takes a lot of time and and money to figure out. But what, maybe you could do like waiving eight tap fee waivers not to exceed. You could put a not to exceed on it that you were comfortable with from a, from a future project phase. And then maybe I can work with Hosway and Johnny and Denise, the architects and the civil engineers, to try to figure out how to allocate upfront infrastructure across across phases and what that looks like. I mean, I just, I'm, I'm processing the information at the same time you are. So it's trying to be creative.
When's your, when's the application deadline?
So we have to go in in June with initial, with our, we're starting the process in June of applying.
And so just to be clear, this thing about this, like, power pole relocation cost, I heard that, and I don't know if this is a question for you, I'm just saying it, but that you talked about, want to talk about later. Does, is that required to do the first eight?
I did not think so, but it sounds like maybe you, it, we, it is. No, I mean, so the the pat, where the, where the utility pole is asked to be moved, that's in like, I think that would impact the fourth phase and the third phase, but not, I mean, we're looking, I mean, we have time to figure that piece out.
I'm just trying to figure out if we're talking about four hundred and sixty eight thousand, eight hundred and eighty seven divided by four, as in like thirty two in four chunks, or if we're talking about one ninety six, nine twenty eight divided by four. As, as I understand, a rough estimate of the total cost with lots of questions outstanding about what the actual cost is going to be and with the understanding that you have to pay more upfront. Because I, I think I'm hearing there's, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, so the aid to construction is for the electric poles. And that is completely separate from the tap fees.
Oh.
Um, and I really think my estimate is going to be way low on that, to be honest with you. That is not something, it's, it's a line that feeds the downtown area. Uh, so the tap fees is two hundred and something, is that correct?
One ninety six, nine twenty.
That's for the water. That is my best guess. But again, if they're talking June, and and I'm going to go back to his, I sit back here and ask Denise, when I was on the phone with the architect, is I was asking for the same information that I'm asking for today. If we're talking June, I can possibly call a contractor that I know that could give me a good size tap that he would recommend for thirty two units and be able to get you a better guess. Uh, but again, I'm guessing and they already have the architectural layout. And for a civil person, he could be able to, you know, it's all calculations. It's, it's simply a calculation that an engineer could do. I'm not an engineer. I mean, you can figure a hundred gallons a day per person and figure out what to put down the sewer. Again, I'm, I'm just trying to get you guys accurate numbers for a decision that you, you as council members have got to make.
So my understanding is that these units are going to be one person, maybe two people probably, as opposed to four, five or six. Does that make a difference in terms of the size of the tap?
It does.
So maybe it would make sense to look at the number of people as much as the number of units.
It it has to do with the amount of bathrooms, the amount of showers, water and dryer.
And how much they're used.
Correct. They, they're asking for no difference than what we went through with DDC. When they had to submit to the EPA, they have to do all these calculations. And then they have to come back and say, this is what size tap we need. So that's what I'm trying to get. What size are we actually talking about? So I can give you accurate numbers to be able to make the decision on your side.
I find Emily's suggestion, I understand you're thinking on the fly to, to be compelling as like sort of a, is, is there sort of a middle ground? Is there something that like not up to a certain thing? And then there's some, you know, there's some negotiation communication that's got to happen in in light of, I think, Marion, you put it well. You know, we just sort of arguably just spent another fifty thousand dollars on something earlier tonight. And we're trying to figure out how we prioritize things. We passed this reciprocal tax earlier in the year without having any budget information for next year. So I, the idea of like, if we're talking about something like fifty or a hundred thousand dollars around tap fees in a way that's been done in the past, given that we didn't respond to the request previously about meeting about it, that feels to me like it's reasonable for us to think about. If we're talking about it's a million dollars, obviously, that's scary, given what our budget situation is. So anyway, that's just my, where I'm at right now.
So I, just in looking at this tap fee estimate table, I mean, you could add up the, it's, that's per unit, right? And the, in the left column, the two fifty per electric tap, twenty three oh eight.
Forty nine, two thirty two for eight with those numbers.
Right, so that would be, I mean, to me, that would be a reasonable not to exceed number until we have more information, just so that we can move forward with the budget for phase one. And then we can, and then I would recommend that we sit down and meaningfully look at the future project phases and also other, other ways that we can find those points of connection. Because, for example, we're working on our housing preservation grant. We expect the NOFA to come out in the next couple of months for next year. Um, maybe that's something we could explore, applying a hundred percent of to loss in place if there are still upgrades and improvements that need to be made. We're also ta, look, talking about property management. I mean, I just think there would be a lot of potential points of connection that we could explore meaningfully. And we're very committed to doing that.
And I, I don't know if it's the wrong way to think about it, but like, we're talking about forty essentially, plus fifty. That's ninety thousand for eight units of affordable housing. Is there anywhere else we're going to be able to get eight units of affordable housing for ninety thousand dollars? Obviously, it's not a done deal. There's a lot of things that have to get figured out. But at least just simple math, it seems like pretty good ROI for us if that's a clear priority. I hoping to hear somebody pitch it a different way, but.
No, I think, I think that's good. I think the idea of saying, you know, whether it's a real number or one fourth of whatever the total is, saying that we would support up to some number. But how you write that number, I don't know.
Okay, anything else? All right, so does somebody want to put this into a motion?
Yeah, I, I move that we invest forty thousand dollars toward the affordable housing project and an additional, pardon, phase one, and an additional fifty thousand toward covering infrastructure, uh, tap fees and that if the cost would, that's what we will invest.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Um, all right, Julie, let's go ahead and call the roll.
Can you? Well. This will come back as a resolution. So you're just basically saying you're going to do a resolution.
Okay.
So just, just so you know, it's not, you know, set in stone at this very second. Um, Stokes?
Yes.
McQueen?
Yes.
Brown?
This is going to come back as a resolution.
Correct.
I would really feel more comfortable, I mean, what, okay, so I'm just going to say this and then I'm going to vote. I don't know if this is a thing or not, but.
It's a thing now.
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, so like, you know, the fact that, you know, the body before, you know, waived the tap fees is kind of a big deal. And I, I really want to think about, you know, I'll think about it on my own, how I feel about that. And now all of a sudden, there's taffies to be paid, be, be paid. Okay, fine. And I would like, I would also like to see some actual numbers and not, not guestimates. I would be, I'd feel more comfortable. So I'm going to vote yes now. And then when it comes back as a resolution, hopefully, we'll have some more information that can make a more informed decision. It seems, this seems really loosey goosey to me.
That was a yes.
Devois Leonard?
Can you say it back, what we're doing, what, we're talking about forty thousand?
And fifty for the tap fee waiver.
Okay, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, all right, uh, let's see. So we're going to talk about recommendations for village event fees. Hosway.
All right. For, for a while now, a couple of years now, I've, we've been dealing with the concern of, of how much the vid, how much it costs to sponsor, support uh, village-wide events. And this issue became much more prevalent last year when, as council was discussing, how much it had cost to village to staff events and provide all the res, all the resources that we provide for, for special events. And over the last two years, as we come back to events, I became aware of council members' interest to want to have more itemized bills, if you will, on what does it cost to support these events? And that there was interest for council to be more explicit about what it was willing to write off from village expenses. So two years later, this memo comes about as an effort to fulfill that request for council in terms of how do we create a process to itemize the expenses of, the, the, the expenses that the village encourages to, to support large events in the village and look for opportunities to recover that, recover the cost. With the team, we've looked at two different models to doing event planning. We've got, I mentioned, those are my memos. And we looked at, at methodologies for calculating our cost recovery fee. So that's included in the memo. But it's important to highlight what's the background of this discussion and, and the numbers and the memo. I'm happy to go through an example, if you want me to go an example as I indicated in the, in the memo. But I think you generally have a good understanding of what the issues we're facing. We, we're incurring cost for these events and council wants to know what those costs are and have a voice and what cost it's willing to absorb. And my memo and the effort from Johnny and, and Paige are in line with providing council that information. And ultimately, it's council's decision on what level of funding it's going to pitch in for special events. And that is council's discretion. We've done, we've done a quite amount of work in implement, in allocating this expense in operations. And during the last budget session, council wanted to see that more broken out. We're making efforts in our budgeting process to break out specific special event costs. So moving forward, we'll be tracking, we'll be tracking those expenses in our expense report of what, what expenses are specific for special events. But that's in a nutshell, what we've been talking about for some time. And we, we follow a pretty robust methodology. The spreadsheet that's before you, one of those numbers is going to change because council has adopted vendor fees. Um, and so that number, the, the councils approve vendor fees will need to be reflected in that spreadsheet. Otherwise, the form is, um, it's, it's, it's ready for public viewing and discussion. And obviously, we'll love to hear from council, what do you see that's working well in the proposal? What's not working well? What do you want to see come back to council?
Okay, Kevin?
Are you saying that the vendor fee, like, like letter C would be taken away because of the new?
Um, it would not be taken away. There will be different ways of assessing. So one of the things that we spoke with council, well, sorry, with the chamber is that they have a methodology of, of collecting the fee. And we're going to expand that collaboration so that they can pay it to the chamber and it'll be for the two events that they have during the year. So that would be the June event and the October event. So the fee will still be collected. We will love to continue working that with Mark. And I'm, I'm sorry if I'm getting ahead of us in this conversation, but the vendor fee will still be there. It would either be, do we charge it through the, through the organizers, event organizers, or directly with the vendors? And that, and that law goes in effect May third. So we're preparing the public notices for those vendor fees.
Okay, any other questions? Mary Ann?
Well, I appreciate that you did this. I think this is important, important to track what our costs are. I, I am foreseeing an issue and I don't really know what to do about that. But I think we're going to see it come up tonight, that probably most events that we have, people will be coming to the village asking us for information. So, so I'm. So so I'm just saying, oh, so do we have some kind of policy about that? Or are we going to have to deal with that at every time we have an event? Because most of the events that we have, there's a case to be made that it supports the community. People can disagree about how much. And I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Gavin, did you have something else?
So I guess, yeah, I guess I'm just not so like, is the assumption that in the sample event, for example, that the cost to the this is a break even point? Or has there been a assessment on what the total cost is from events this year for like in, you know, in a year, for example?
We we assessed the last street fair and Johnny, I don't know if you want to jump in on this, but we were looking at without including my time, Johnny's time, and Paige's time, we were close to forty thousand in staff time and resources. Johnny, do you want to jump in?
I can speak for the electric department had forty five hundred dollars invested, and the street department had thirty seven hundred dollars invested. And I believe Paige was almost fifteen thousand. Don't quote me on pages. That's just going by memory.
Sure. But just so we're clear, this this event fee scale is not meant to cover the entirety of the cost. It's meant to cover some portion of it?
Correct.
Is that is that portion even even throughout? Or is a particular percentage of the actual cost that you that is being represented by the fee?
Yeah, if we were to look at Johnny's example that he had, that comes up to about twenty seven thousand. Probably the figure that you have in front of you might be that six thousand three hundred and four. I think that the fee, if we were to calculate the volume of people, it might get it up to nine thousand. So that will be about a little bit less than half of what the cost of. And they are, we have discussed things internally on how we can create efficiencies in the process. For example, Johnny's looking at the removing of the fencing for the play for the basketball court and doing in a way that the second time it gets done, it's much cheaper, lower cost and easier to do. We've talked about the barricades, fencing, a few other items that would result in some savings down the road. But the fee, it's not designed to account for a hundred percent of the cost. It's more like half. Now, part of that, and I made reference to to in the in the report and the memo about this, that we care about all of these events. We want to continue to support them, and we want to see them thrive. We've we've talked to our partners about how to improve the experience and how to do things better. So we're certainly coming from a place that we want to see these events thrive in our community. We've given the pressure that we receive from council around the budget, we want to ensure that we all know what we are signing up for. And I think that is what essentially council has asked. We want to know what the costs are and have a say on what we are what we're waving.
Okay, ultimately, we're making decisions about taxpayer dollars. But we understand that events make a community healthy and thriving. And I think a lot of municipalities, at least the most successful ones, do support events. So I think it is important that, to me, this chart or whatever you call it, highlights a few other things. One is, it helps give us an idea of how we make a decision for what we do donate to the event. I think it also indicates to the organizer where we should be recognized as a sponsor. I mean, you know, for example, you know, when you hear forty thousand dollars for a street fair, which, you know, in the past, we've we've done it, and it's been great. But I doubt there's another sponsor that's putting in that much. I mean, I'm not sure. But, you know, so so I think that's important for all organizers to think about, you know, just the value that that the village is bringing, even if it's not on the John Bryan Center Lawn. And there's there are lots of expenses involved. But, you know, again, this does come back to, we can still make decisions, sort of what Mary Ann said, when folks come and say, will you donate the movement of the barricades and and, you know, the other things? So.
I feel like this is just something that takes place in municipalities, and it's just something that kind of happens behind the scenes. And it's important that we discuss this stuff. But when we start, I mean, I, yes, of course, in kind donations and labor and people power, there it does incur a cost to the village. But it looks different than hard numbers, because we're talking about events that, and this is I'm wearing both hats here, this we're talking about events that profoundly benefit the sense of community in the village, benefit the businesses in the village for those couple of days. And I've been on either side when we have an event, making really good money, and helping to provide some of the business owners with like good customer service, and we enjoy it. And it's like a sense of camaraderie. And it's like, I don't like, for me, I don't want to say putting a price on it, because I understand that everything has a cost. But it's like I said, it's nice to see the numbers. But when we kind of inject what a municipality does for its community members for these signature events, like, I don't, you know, Oktoberfest in Cincinnati, and I have never, and we go to Oktoberfest every year, I've never read or had or seen a public discussion about what the city of Cincinnati, the cost that they incur for their signature events. It just feels a little strange to me that we're, I don't want to say that we're talking about it. I know that we ask for it, but I don't know if we just I just wanted to break down, like, and I feel like what's happening now is there's a lot of, you know, now is not the time for us to be kind of working against each other. And I feel like this kind of is doing that.
Any other questions or comments? All right. So Don, you started to come up and say something. All right, come on up.
All right. So guys, I think you did just really hit something on the head, you know, you a lot of tax dollars are generated by the businesses in town. I mean, let's face it, we are somewhat of a tourist town now, and that's our that's what we're doing. You know, I walked down through a lot of the events that we do. I mean, outdoor theater productions, the farmer's market, Memorial Day Parade, July Fourth, Juneteenth Parade, Our Pride, the Art on the Lawn stuff, Zombie Walk. None of them are going to be able to afford these fees. I mean, there is absolutely no way. Not not if I'm going by, but this little estimate of any kind of an eight hour event. So if that's the case, essentially, these events go away. So where does that leave me? Well, it leaves me with one of the highest bid of property taxes around. My electric, water, and sewer is raised constantly. Every time I turn around, somebody wants another levy. We are talking about fifty to sixty million dollars for a new high school. Guys, the tits run dry. You can only come through the well so many times. And then when you want to take away stuff that literally drives people here, what? I mean, if I hear one more time, somebody talk about making things affordable for me, I haven't seen affordable in fifteen years. I mean, so I don't know. I think this is ridiculous. I can't even imagine that you're going to say that Pride now has to have sixty three hundred dollars to do their event. They don't make sixty three hundred dollars. So where is this? Where's the math in this? Any any answers?
I mean, the answer is what we already said. This is just a calculation of what it costs the village. And we've donated, I mean, how much did we donate to Pride last year?
Yeah, but see, guys, we're the village. I mean, my tax dollars are you and back. So it's kind of like telling me, hey, you know, I'm going to cut off your money that I've already taken. You got it. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I think I agree if this was about.
But I watched tonight, a whole damn bunch of money getting given out.
Yeah.
So, you know, it kind of it's like we're at the we're at the end of the teeth now.
Yeah. All right. I think those are good points.
We normally pay five hundred and eighty dollars. That's normally our cost to you guys. We've been doing this for years. And now you want to jump in and say sixty three hundred dollars? And that fictitious example you're looking at, that's based on.
Heather, you're going to have to come up to the mic.
That that fictitious example, that's those numbers is our event. So that sixty three hundred is what you're saying we need to pay you. But I'm really confused as to why this number or these fees were even presented to us. This doesn't sound like this has been passed. This doesn't sound like this is even in effect. So why are you telling us we need to pay you this money? Until this is approved, this should have never even come to us. We should have filled out our permit. You should have approved or denied it at the five hundred dollars we've always paid. And we should not even know about this. This should be kept in house until y'all figure out what the hell y'all want to do. Excuse me. Sorry.
Okay.
We shouldn't even be like, it's like the parents need to figure out what's going on, and then you come to us and talk to us. Instead, you've involved all of us and got us all in a tizzy, trying to figure out how in two months, we're going to come up with sixty three hundred dollars to have an event. So this discussion should have happened a long time ago. But because we're here now, you guys should be having this discussion. Once you figure that out, approach us in 2024. This is what our fee structure now is. This is what we expect you to pay. But coming at us two months in advance is absolutely mind boggling and absurd, not to mention the numbers. Why did you pick Seattle? Why would you base events in Seattle, which is seven hundred and fifty thousand people versus a village less than five thousand? Then, I mean, you should be picking demographics. I work with the city of Xenia, the city of Springfield, the village of Enon. None of this happens. None of these numbers happen in any of these other demographics around you. You should be following suit with the area around you, not something across the country.
All right. Thanks, Heather. And again, I'll just emphasize, this was an exercise to figure out what the costs were. Nobody's saying that anyone's hold on, Christine's next. No one's well, hold on, Don, if you. Okay, hold on. Well, okay, well, we can.
And we were told if we didn't have.
Okay. Well, Amy, first of all, you're going to have to come up. But we can clarify like the miscommunication. But what I'm saying right now.
Clarify the backdoor conversations.
Okay, that's Amy, please. Okay, so again, we are discussing what the costs are. I don't, I mean, I don't know of any like, you know, telling the chamber they need to pay us forty thousand, or that, you know, again, if you got the message that you were supposed to pay six thousand. Okay, well, all right, hold on, Mark. So I'm not aware of that. But what I am aware of is that the exercise is to understand what the costs are, and then make appropriate decisions based on that. So if there's been some miscommunication, I understand whenever these topics come up. Okay, well, let's clarify that. All right. So Christine?
So I just want to expand upon, you know, affordability, great, lovely. But here's the thing. You guys need to start thinking of the business community and investing in the business community. Because this business community runs this town. If we don't have because tourism is it, we've 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 blown all of our business out of the water. Nobody wanted the CBE back in the day. So we got two little measly businesses down there floating our property taxes, income taxes, you know, utility share, school taxes, everything else. So we're kind of hosed. We've green belted ourselves into this tiny little space. So now we can't get any taxes from those properties, school taxes, income taxes, so on and so forth. So now we've got tourism, which we've always been a tourist town. I mean, I can go over the history with it. Since eighteen twenty seven, we've been a tourist town. Stop attacking the business community. The business community is what feeds this town. There is never any conversation. There's never any weighing into the business community. There's never, hey, we're thinking about doing this. How do y'all feel about it? Hey, we're thinking about, you know, making this grand assumption of using single, you know, wiping out single use plastics. I mean, you guys just keep coming up with this stuff. It was a Dora two years ago. Not one conversation was had with anyone in the business community. You know, when the business community dies in this town, you'll be looking at Jamestown. You'll be looking at downtown Xenia. You'll be looking at downtown Enon. You'll have no problem with affordability in that when we get to that point. Because nobody will want to live here. Nobody will come here. Nobody will spend any money here. Money is what we're talking about. You want more money, you're going to have to generate more people in some way, shape, and form. These groups, your community groups, like three sixty five project, Pride, Street Fair, that's what keeps tourists coming in. That's what keeps the money coming in. That's what keeps all your downtown businesses going. Street Fair floats a lot of businesses downtown. You guys need to remember, this is a whole community. Everything is important. So affordable housing and lots of money going to that is no more important than feeding into your business community.
Thanks, Christine. Amy?
So we tried to get ahead of this. Our first meeting was February sixth. We actually met with village personnel before the street fair, the chamber did. And yet, we were only identified, we were only told about fees a couple of weeks ago in relation to this. We were told that we were, we originally had a conversation where we were going to be back here. We originally had a conversation, where are we going to put our stage? It was actually recommended by Johnny. When I came back to the second meeting, at the very end of the meeting, all of a sudden, we couldn't have our stage there. But nobody told us for months. We were told flat out, if we did not come up with compostable cups or recyclable cups, our, what do you call it, application would not be approved. We were told that. And I said, are you kidding me? And I looked at Paige, and she said, they won't approve it. That's what we were told. Now, I know for a fact that that didn't pass now. But in the meeting, we were told that as fact. So here we are, talking about these fees, and we were presented an example, which is the same example you now have in front of you, which is the same example that I put that I had asked Judy to put in last council meeting, along with the two requests where I had asked, if we can't put the state, if we're paying sixty three hundred dollars to be in a parking lot, I want to be able to put the stage where I want to put the stage. And if I can't put the stage where I want to put the stage, then where can I put the stage? Because I should not have to pay thirty four hundred dollars for removal and replacement of a fence after paying sixty three hundred dollars to have a parking lot. Okay, that's not fair, right? Also, Seattle was used. I don't know if you went out to the Seattle link. But if you went out to the Seattle link, it's forty four pages of explanations with references to all of the organizations. If you go on their website, they have how to plan an event. They give you where to go for safety training. They give you what to do for crowd control, how to plan a budget, how to fundraise, what to do. Nothing. All we're getting is a little matrix of all these numbers we have to pay. And even the vendor fee itself was for resources and to make sure that there's quality product. So I'm now going to ask, are we spending money to have somebody go around and look at every single booth and say whether or not it's quality product and then send the people home? If it's not quality product, after they have already signed up to be a vendor for our for our event? I mean, plus, if you want to follow Seattle, they actually say for community service events, which ours would count as, it means I think there's six criteria, we meet five out of the six criteria, policing's free. Yeah, yeah, up to three hundred man hours policing's free. So we'd like to ask for three hundred, up to three hundred man hours free. I mean, we're not saying that we're not going to pay for what we don't what we we want to pay for what we use. But at the same time, we want it to be fair and throwing it at us less than sixty days before an event or seventy five days before an event is just, it's not fair.
And Amy, Mark, did you want to? Okay. All right.
Well, and I'll just say, I'm happy. I do this for a living. I own an event company. I've been international planning events. I am happy to sit down with you and come over a great plan on what stuff should cost on doing this, because these numbers just don't. I mean, like, you have an attendance fee, right? You say if you fall between ten thousand and twenty five thousand people, this is what X amount of dollars you need to pay the village. Who controls that? Are you only going to have one entrance into a festival and somebody is clicking to make sure we fall within that? I mean, you're going to spend more money trying to staff an event to make the money you're asking for. It just doesn't make any sense. So I am happy to sit down with you and go over all the contracts and other village permits that I do. And we can come up with a great plan that works out for everyone. But just this cut and paste of just the fee portion of Seattle is bonkers, because the whole ordinance lies out numerous things to help different organizations, like our small organizations. What 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 you're looking at in Seattle are commercial for-profit events, music concerts, you know, large events that are like Live Nation is coming in and putting on. Yeah, Seattle wants their cut of money. They're not talking about little communities. They're not talking about little community street fairs and nonprofit organizations in villages of 5,000 and less. Heather, just for the record, keep getting your last name.
Stewart. Sue Art.
So I do want to say a couple of things. First of all, we have had extensive discussions with Hosway and Johnny and Paige about the cost of street fair. We've seen the comments of, of the community in the past that say, hey, how, you know, how is this getting paid back to the village? So I understand the pressure that's on the council, aside from the budgetary constraints that the council is facing right now. There is no way in the world Pride has the resources that the chamber has, and we know that. And you've made some really great points about that. The chamber has walked into this agreeing with our, the consultant that we have organizing street fair to figure out a way to pay a fair portion of what is being presented, because we can afford to. These other festivals can't. And now I'm going to speak from, from the Buckeye Trail Association and say the little event that we had last year, the first weekend of June, we would never be able to afford to do that. I see both sides of this. I want you to know that the chamber is committed to paying a fair share and making sure that, that the village is made as whole as possible. But the one thing that I do agree with, and Hosway has received this feedback from me as well as Johnny and Paige. And that is that the amount of, it, it takes at least a year to ramp up to something like this. Now, we're going to make it happen this year. But honestly, in all fairness, it really takes a year of planning to make that work without it being a huge hit to any organizational budget. Forget the event budget. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, Gavin.
And we gotta do better. This is, this is a bummer. I mean, the minimum stuff of like giving lots of time, I mean, communicating better. There's just so many parts of this that are disappointing. I don't, I, our, this is like, our communication collaboration with folks has just got to get better. I just, I'm saying this because there's a bunch of us who don't know any of this until we sit up here and hear it too. So I'm just saying, like, as everybody who has a responsibility, that's my take from this, is we gotta do better in communication. This is, this is really disappointing.
Well, you know, I, I certainly don't like the frustration. I think you guys know that I support the event. I personally was out there working the event last year. So I, and I use my own funds to, to buy food. So I think the chamber, you see me out there at 4:00, 5:00 AM with you guys. So I certainly believe in these events and put our, our work behind the event. Johnny, same thing. The entire team is committed to these events. The costs are hard to ignore. And I have the responsibility to inform council, keep you informed. You've asked for this cost. It's also up to you to let me know and authorize me to what cost I can write off or absorb. So the, the timing is certainly has been difficult. We've been trying to have this conversation with council for some time now. There have been a lot more pressing items that have come up and things just get pushed down the line. We're going to be pushing, might be pushing one thing off the agenda tonight, just because of how long we're going. But I want to reassure our community partners that you see me work side by side with you to have, make sure these events go forward. And then I just need, but that's the entire team. I hope you can appreciate that we are trying to find the balance. Maybe the communication was terrible. Yes, could have been better about that. But I think our team, everyone in my staff, has demonstrated commitment to ensuring the safety of, of all the participants, our community, and to ensure that you guys are supported and being your creative and delivering the culture and creativity of the organizations.
Really quickly, and I appreciate everything that you've said, but as a, as a council person, it's really kind of surprising to me that we would use such a large city, like the city of Seattle. Especially if we're going to use that as kind of, you know, our, our example. Then if we're going to do that, then we also need to have these resources available and the, and the explanation of exactly how to do everything. We can't keep changing the rules in the middle of the game. And I feel like that's kind of the general consensus. I felt like, like that when I got the memo. I don't understand why, why would we, why we would use an example from such a huge municipality.
Yeah, and part of that is what research and market materials are available. Those two documents that I made reference to were the ones that had a defined methodology that we can go back and look at. So I think part of it is like what's readily available and what are things that are verifiable? Not just for us, but also for you guys. You guys could, I put the link there on purpose so that it's the.
Okay, actually, Heather, no, 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 Heather, please. Dino, hold on. Okay, because we really kind of need to wrap this up, but go ahead.
I was responding to.
Okay, well, all right, hold on, guys. Look, like. Amy, you can't just, all right, but I did meet with you guys. Okay. All right, so, okay, first of all, like all the come ons and talking from the seats, you guys can't do that. We gotta have some decorum, all right? I'm always really open about letting discussion happen. Normally, people talk one time, but I've been letting people come up and whatever. I understand this is important. All right, Dino, go ahead.
Quickie, as always, casual observation from a casual guy. $50,000 waived on health insurance, correct? Forty thousand, $90,000 waived to Home Inc. Events, you're paying. Just a casual observation, just, and, and events never were paid for before. Wes Carmo brought up, you know, you're changing the game, just a casual observation, so that we should all be on the same page for consistency.
No, I mean, that's, that's really what I'd like to say as well. Like I, I said, I think there's been an awful lot of money dolled out tonight. I mean, I think at very most, if you put all of our festivals together, you might be times, I mean, at least twice a year, and if not more. Why is it unsafe? Why not this time? I mean, Hosway, I really want to hear. I mean, because this is an event that is literally 30 days away, guys. I mean.
Well, we're not going to have a back and forth, but that's part of why. That's part of why I put Pride on the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Don.
I just want to say, I agree. I, Hosway was standing out there with us last night, last year, working. Johnny's been great. I mean, I have nothing against your support as people. Okay, that, I have no problem. And many a times we've been in meetings and we're like, don't take this personal. I have nothing personally against either one of you. So I just want to make that clear, and neither does anybody on the committee. We appreciate what you have done, but to come to us at this point in time is just not acceptable. And if you want to call this an example, or you want to call this an exercise, then maybe you should have had a meeting with us. Like you had a meeting with the collaborative people for the entrepreneurship over 3D printing. Everybody seemed to know a lot about 3D printing, you know, to answer that, which came out of left field. But we didn't have any meeting with any of the event committee people prior to coming up with this fee schedule. So what you did with the 3D printing people was an exercise. There was no exercise with us. And so I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm not sure that, like, we'll, we'll be talking about this more, but, uh, yeah. Sure.
Hey, everyone, this is Philip O'Rourke, and I'm speaking on behalf of Pride and just, I'm taking my village hat off right now. So one of the things, I mean, I'm not going to regurgitate, I just have a request. One of the things that we heard was that there's been challenging communication. And my hope and my ask is that in the packet right now, there's a letter that I wrote. Because we're at a very pivotal moment where we have to move forward. We have to do something. And we're really wrestling with what that means with the village. You have in the packet an opportunity to be a, a sponsor. I don't think that there's been that kind of verbiage with the village when it comes to this particular event, because you've always just sponsored it. Now, there's criteria to it, because we're on a timeline and we don't know what's going to happen. So my ask is, when we leave here, we need to know what to do. What do we do next? I know this is very quick and it's a very big turnaround time, but I don't want to leave here, and I don't know if that's too big of a ask, with kind of, now what? How do we move forward with council? What are we going to be asked to pay? Should we be in a holding pattern? How do we do that? How do we speak voice into the collaborative? Because right now, it all sounds good and it sounds like we're getting to a good place. But if I were to walk out of this room right now, I wouldn't know what to really do. I don't know. You know, how are we going to participate? What does this mean? Does council need to have another conversation and really flesh this out? And say, you know what, we really need to understand how we're doing all the events, all of this. Somebody said, put the cart before the horse. And I think that that's part of why the communication's so challenging, because we're communicating backwards. This would be so much easier if this happened first. And then we come and say, hey, now we would like to do this. So my, my request is, once you start to wrap up and we get to a good place, give some sort of insight as to where do we go from here? Pride, we see this in the packet. This is our recommendation. Because if we just leave with just like, I don't know, we're running out of time. Okay, running out of time.
Thanks, Philip. Okay, um, I think this is going to be a continuing conversation. And I guess, does anyone on council have anything they need to say right now about this?
Well.
Mary Ann?
You know, I, as Gavin said, I don't think, I, I'm not aware of any, well, at least I'll speak for myself. I have had no communication previous to this. I know nothing about what's been communicated to any group. I do think it's important that the village understand what its expenses are for events. That, that was what I understood this purpose to be. I also read that it said a potential fee structure. I also assumed that most of the events are going to come to the village and ask for a donation, which is what I said at the beginning. So it's sort of like back on us, well, how are we going to do that piece? So that's how I have been seeing it, that we figure out what our expenses are. And then people are probably going to say, are we going to give a donation? And then that gives us a basis for understanding if we're donating and what we're donating.
Well, that was the intent. And I'll just apologize for, again, what I'm going to say is miscommunication, if, you know, that in fact did happen. But we're going to keep working on this and let's know. You can talk to me, you can. Okay, so YS Pride is on new business. Okay, so Heather, you got it really. Okay, all right. So pesticide policy, do we need to talk about that tonight?
Yeah, I'd like to not talk about pesticide. We've got folks here from YSDC who've been here for a while. I don't know that we have any folks that are here to talk about pesticide, but.
Oh, except for me, but that's cool.
Well.
No, but never mind, it's good. Let's keep it rolling.
Well, you'll, you'll be here next time.
Yeah, I will, let's keep it moving.
Okay, so then let's go ahead and move into new business and talk about how the village works with YSDC and vice versa.
Yes, well, Dino, hi. Dino came to the council meeting, oh, about three meetings ago and, and, you know, asked council, straight up, what, what do you, what, what are your thoughts? What do you care about Yellow Springs Development Corporation? So there's a great deal of information in the packet. Thank you, Lisa Abel, for all of it. That was meant to inform us, you know, about the foundation and the rationale for Yellow Springs Development Corporation. You know, as, if you will, the economic development agent for the village. Since Lisa Abel in particular has taken on the role of a Miller fellow, Encore Miller fellow, working on behalf of the Yellow Springs Development Corporation. We've certainly made great strides. And so I'm pleased that, that, that we're making the traction that we've been trying to get going, I think, for a couple of years. And of course, there's been some things, I'll use the phrase fits and starts, that I don't think Yellow Springs Development Corporation is responsible for. We were asked to do some things and we agreed to, and, and they probably weren't the best things to, to agree to do. So there's that. So council, you've got a great deal of information about what Yellow Springs Development Corporation is doing. We've got the leadership folks here, like this is like the executive, almost executive council of, of the YSDC. So I would open the floor, first of all, to council members who have any questions, concerns about what you read in the packet. And also to my colleagues from the YSDC to come up and share any thoughts, concerns, wishes, aspirations, et cetera. So anyone, concerns, issues, questions?
Okay, so can you just, I, I, I thought I read everything, but I guess I, I'm not really, so what are we agreeing to? Is it like a conceptual thing, or does it lead to some? I, I just, can you summarize for me? I, it just wasn't clear to me what exactly we were agreeing to.
Well, the, the impetus again was Dino's question, as president of YSDC, asking what, what do we care about YSDC? What, how are we going to, what are our, what are our plans or thoughts or intentions to use YSDC? We talk about economic development, but I don't know that we have any more than this sort of loose tangential type relationship. And perhaps it's, it's to empower the development corporation to take more of a leadership role or be more involved with some of the marketing, some of the affirmative marketing that we, that we've done. Or just strengthening, strengthening our ties. Anybody from the YSDC want to stand up? I know there's a lot of information that's been shared. And again, I don't, I know it's probably difficult to digest, digest it all of that.
No, I mean, and just to be clear, like, there wasn't, everything about it sounded good. Like, I was supportive of it. I just didn't know if there was some, like, a concrete thing would happen, or there was something that we hadn't been doing that there was a desire for us to do that I missed. I, yeah, sorry.
I think you missed it. I think that's exactly, that's exactly the right question, because we're at the same place. We're not getting, we're looking for a direction or we're looking for action that you want us to take. You know, if it's from staff or if it's from you guys and economic development. I mean, we, we just go in our meetings and we all, you know, we, we talk with all of, all the entities that are in the village and the township. And we hash through issues, but we're not really have a direction. You know, like Gavin, you want to see, you want to see economic development out of a certain business or of a certain technology group? Or if you, Brian, you want to see us to go manufacturing? Or if you want, you know, there's no direction and we're not, we're tasked with just kind of, we're just a flag in the wind. We're just like, wherever, just give us a direction. And that's why I asked the question, I asked, is there value? Do you see value? Do you have value? Do you want to have value? Hosway does a lot of work. Hosway has a lot of stuff on his plate. Maybe Hosway wants to dole some stuff over to us. You know, it, those kinds of things. Or, you know, if we're doing economic development and Johnny's got things that, you know, we know we've got a project coming, if there's things that we can do. I mean, it's just like, you've got a lot of manpower and a lot of hours that go into it. And Lisa's pouring in a lot of hours now that we're going, and we just, or we're just treading water. And that's, it's just not, we're not effective. It's, it's not an effective tool. And I think there's a tool in your belt that's just not being used. I mean, I think that's the best way I can explain it. We just, there's a tool belt here and you're not using us. And that's what, I, I think we had, Corey brought in somebody from Urbana. It was an economic development person that's in Springfield. And he came in and talked to us and told us about what was going on in Urbana. And how they simply, they had stack financing, they had their downtown, they had their downtown that was abandoned, for lack of better words, hotel, whatnot. So they stacked financed through the state, through feds, through local, through private. And they, they made their downtown vital. They put in affordable housing. They turned a hotel into apartment complex, you know? So they generate, they're generating something that's giving back to the, to the village, but giving back to the city of Urbana. And it was, you know, it's tax dollars. All of a sudden, they have an abandoned building that's now generating, not only people are living there, generating tax dollars. They got people that are working and all that. So, you know, those are the things that I think I, I mean, I feel like I'm just, I'm just, I don't want to waste your time, our time, their time. We're all putting in a lot of effort here and we just want, we want to, we want to be of use to you. That's the bottom line. Whatever that looks like, that's what we want to bring to the table. I mean, we're here to be used, use us.
And of course, all of us remember the fire station and how that was a big project. And that was, you know, very early on and soon after the inception of the development corporation. So, I mean, that made sense. But, but I don't think, I don't know that we've had stuff come across our table. The whole Dayton Business Journal, hopefully there is some coordination going on with that. But I think it's incumbent upon us as, as council and involving staff as well, Hosway, looking for opportunities to take advantage, you know, of, of these resources. I mentioned Meg coming on with her. I mentioned Meg coming on with her economic development experience. I, you know, I don't want to be so presumptuous as to start taking away from time from your new employee, you know? But, but I wonder if she could be plugged in in such a manner that we would have more of a symbiotic relationship and, and more of a, of a real relationship in terms of getting things done. Corey, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Corey Benostal, I'm the vice president. So one of the things is, we're here, we have some special powers as a CIC. And, and yet, if we don't have assignments from you guys and from the township about how you want us to proceed, then we're kind of casting about. We have expenses, we have, you know, accounting, attorney, website, things like that, where if we're not really doing anything, it's kind of a waste for us to be here, right? And yet, we're hearing from the folks tonight, thank you, that economic development should be a priority for this group and for the village because we need more businesses to support the infrastructure, to support the school buildings. And that's, that's what we're built for. It's just, so, you know, last year, we went through a whole visioning thing all year long. And you may or may not be surprised to learn that what we as a coalition coalesced on vision is economic development, housing, schools. And, um, you know, that's, yes, we agree. That's what everybody agrees. So what, where do you want us to go first? And then we'll go forth and do that. You know, we were working with the Dayton Development Corporation about this concept of, you know, developing a profile for ourselves to, so the regional development corporations know that Yellow Springs is still a very desirable place for people to want to settle, want to bring their businesses. But they don't, there's not really, since Karen's gone, a, a public face of the village saying, these are the villages, these are the businesses that will do really well in the village, that, you know, they're, will roll out the red carpet for. And these are the ones that will, everybody will get their pitchforks and light their torches. So we can be that body if that's what you want us to do. But if, you know, two weeks later, you guys are going to the Dayton Business Journal, which is fine, but just, you know, loop us in so that we can be part of that too. And that way, we can take that off your plate, we can participate in it, we can help you. Do you really want to be landlords for apartments? I don't know. I mean, maybe that needs to be siphoned off into a third party that could manage that for you so you don't end up looking like the bad guy when you have to evict somebody, which is just part of being a landlord. So that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Okay, um, all right, well, I'll say a few things because Mary Ann and I, we're at the beginning of the YSDC. We did all the visits with all the groups. And I guess we in particular had a particular idea about what the group would do based on some of the challenges the village had and based on, you know, I think some of the positives and negatives of community resources, which was why the designated piece was so important. You know, it's interesting to me because when it started, the idea was a place for the taxing bodies to coordinate, work on resident, residential development, of course, work on economic development, number one. And there were a few other things that were outlined. And then, you know, it did kind of slip and slide. You know, there was a lot of, I guess, kind of growing pains figuring it out. And so it sounds like, maybe it's come full circle to the point where Lisa and I met and I really liked the idea of YSDC understanding better what the village goals are, what our needs are. So I want this to not just be, we give you assignments, but, you know, let's make sure that we're like looking at, just like in the documents that Kevin shared, when at the beginning, we grabbed the values and goals of all the different participating organizations. So I think that's, that's going to be number one. Number two, I think we've gotten a clear signal. Look at the goals and just start, like, let's have a conversation. What do you see, right? Things like the Dayton Business Journal, the 3D printing, other things. That was something that it was not clear for me, probably not for Hosway, that that was something that DC was ready to be involved in. So great to hear that you are. I, I think we, you know, definitely want that activity. Other people in the room and other perspectives are, are really good. But I guess, really to me, it was when Dino at that meeting, a couple of meetings ago, like said, you know, what do we mean to you, right? So the other thing that's really important is that we've got to have that communication coming from, like, great that you guys are working on a profile. I, I'd like to know that you're doing that. I saw some notes that Lisa had or whatever. And I actually wondered, don't we have a local business network? But anyway, you know, so there were some things like that, that I, I want to make sure that we're part of the conversations and, and so that we're molding those documents in a way that makes sense. So I think that there's a lot that could be done. So it's good that we're having this conversation because I, I had not gotten the sense, I, I got the sense of YSDC was kind of doing some different stuff, good stuff. And, and so it's great to bring it back to the economic challenges that the village has.
So, go ahead, go ahead.
So I guess if we're going to be asking for comments, which I guess is what you were asking. I do think that figuring out a way to have more ongoing, as in monthly, really, communication between council and the development corporation would be a good thing. And when I was involved, you know, I was interested in housing and then it seemed like that went off the table. I appreciate the things you were raising about the property management, that sort of thing. But looking at the economy, I would suggest looking at whatever we can do with what's being called the circular economy. Maybe some of you have read about that. The Netherlands is really working on that. In other words, rather than doing the extractive economy, which we have, we take resources, we use them up and we throw them away, circular. The resources from one thing become the waste, become the resources for something else. And that you also involve equity in that too. So if we look around, what do we have around us? Well, we have prime farmland, for example. So value-added food and organic farming and things seems like a no-brainer in terms of local economy. Green, anything green, whether it's solar panels, uh, technology, that's green technology, those kinds of things. I think anything that can help us be sustainable as a community, that those are the kinds of things I would love to see the YSDC work.
Well, I, I could brainstorm too. I guess, so, you know, I've been on since May. I don't, I don't think, so it's like almost a year now. I don't think we've ever had a dedicated conversation about economic development in the last year, to my knowledge. We've had things that come up like now and then, but mostly it's like a thing that just sort of happens. Like with the 3D thing we talked about earlier today. I'd never heard about that before and then boom. So where do we talk about it? Because I, I, like, just legitimately, do we talk, should we set an agenda item side for that we talk here? Is there like a work session we need to have? Is there, it seems like there's, this is coming up in multiple ways. I just don't know, like, where do we talk about it?
Yeah, I think a work session, dedicated work session, it can be designated to maybe cover a couple of things. But I think, you know, we, we all use the phrase economic development probably every meeting. We say something about it, but to your point Gavin, we just have not been intentional. It's sort of, oh, by the way. So I think we, we could probably start with, you know, a, a dedicated work session. You know, the minutes from YSDC, they're in the packet, you know, on a monthly basis. So, but we, you know.
We've never talked about them.
Yeah, nothing gets highlighted. So how about that? How about a dedicated work session in, in the next couple, few weeks? To really sit down and, and, and inform each other, you know? Like we all, like the IC 3D thing is fairly new for us. Sounds like it's a done deal, that's great, you know? But, but, but there's probably still something where, where all these very intelligent people could, could, could get involved with to help move things along.
Okay, so I think that's a great idea. So I'm going to suggest that you and Hosway work with the DC team, all right? And plan an agenda, all right? Make sure we've got our homework assignments. So we've looked at the goals and all those kinds of things. Okay, I think that sounds great.
All right.
Okay, Lisa.
Oh, because I was like, huh, 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 huh. I have no poker face. I have no poker face. Yeah, okay. So what, what I'm hearing is that we have this underutilized, really brilliant group of people. One of them happens to be a business owner. And we're two, sorry, we're moving forward initiatives to bring, you know, some STEM industry and 3D printer stuff. It, it only makes sense to me, I would have thought that they would have been involved with that conversation.
Lisa is involved.
Okay.
Now.
Now. But, and yeah, so that's, that's, that's the operative. So now. So, I mean, is, am I, is that reasonable? And you're also here and, I mean, there's a, there's the opportunity to liaise, you know, to be a liaison between business, businesses, business, potential business and us. That, yes, okay.
And I, I'm sorry that it's 10:30 at night that we're talking about this. And y'all have been here since six.
Yep.
And that there's 200 pages in the council packet. So maybe you didn't see all the pages that we put in the middle of that. The profile document is in there. We, so, so here's, here's where we are. We've looked at the past 20 years of the, the local economy and especially, I'm talking about non-retail for now. And we were a manufacturing town. And that has slowly gone away. What we've become, whether we knew it or not, is value-added ag. So we've got Cresco, we've got Tuck and Red's. You see the front of the house, but back of the house is making private label liquor for distribution. YS Brewery, you see the front of the house, but the back of the house is, they've got cans all over Ohio. And, and there's more, there's more examples, but those are just a few. So we do need to capitalize on, on value-added ag. When you talk with those businesses, they give you great ideas. Like Tuck and Red said, they'd love to use strawberries, local strawberries, year-round for the strawberry wine. Well, you know, strawberry season here is one month maybe. But if there was a flash freezer and, and some farmers who are willing to give up their fields for all of June and produce all the strawberries for a year, get them flash frozen. So another idea, boom, just like that. And so I don't know how to do flash freezing, but we can start to, you know, socialize that idea. Couple of things. So we, in the, in the profile document, we considered village values. So the ideas of, as Mary Ann said, more of a sustainable type of economy, involve equity, definitely. And I think the 3D project, if we get that, will, we will be pushing for that. It's supposed to be about job improvement for rural folks, for disadvantaged folks. So we've got a great opportunity there. I don't think economic development is on the village's goals for this year. I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure it's not in the list.
It is related to like municipal broadband and a few other things.
But not?
Not spelled out. Yeah, you'd have to put on your rose-colored glasses and then squint.
Well, that's because you got, you guys are supposed to be our economic development arm. But I will say what we did is, we pulled out, there's lots of other goals that are underneath that. And actually, I should share that document with you as well. Because then you can see some of the things that we've tried to do in the past. So, cool, all right? Thank you, guys. Good discussion.
Thank you for coming, guys.
We'll set up a meeting. Okay, so last item is the YS Pride request under new business. Okay, so first answer to Phillip's question that you emphasized several times, what to do next, is just like always, a request to the village on how you want us to support the event, all right? Yep, yep, okay. And so, so related to that, you know, if we now are looking at like, you know, public safety costs and some of those things. I mean, even if you hire your own off-duty sheriffs, we still have things we have to do, right? And, you know, making sure the safety, the bollards, all that kind of stuff. So, so making sure that we've got that ask so that we can respond to that, okay? That's, that's number one. Number two, I don't think we can get into, but I have the same question that Don raised, that I can know you guys have raised about Short and Walnut Street. So I don't want to get into a discussion about that right now, but I would like to follow up on that tomorrow, all right? And, and I guess I want to understand, because personally, we've always talked about starting to think about Short Street as a potential venue. This would be a great chance in my mind to experiment with that. So anyway, so I want to understand where that decision came from and, and maybe if we can change it, okay? All right, so what else do you guys need to know?
Yeah, we'll talk over. So, um, we're not going to get specific, okay? Our ask is that sponsorship letter of $5,000. If you would like to be a presenting sponsor, you can determine how you would like to pay that to us, right? So if it is because we have $6,300 worth of fees, 5,000 of it can be towards the village and you can figure out how you'd like to do that. Or if you don't want to sponsor us at that level, whatever level you would like to sponsor us. So that letter was our ask because we don't know where to go from here. For example, in the meeting that we had, the last meeting, I was told this year, the fees aren't on there for hanging banners, but next year we'll be charged for the fees to hang the banners, even though the village has paid for the banners and this is a village-sponsored event. So that is an additional to what we're being charged this year that we now know is coming next year. So we don't know anymore, so we're just asking you to be a presenting sponsor. So that's the first ask. The second thing in regards to the application, we were told that for safety reasons, we could not use Short Street as a beer garden. We were then told that the entire event should be on private property or we need to use the Bryant Center. We're not doing that. We are speaking to private property to move our beer garden. Our vendors will be on Mills Lawn. We are asking for a shutdown of Walnut Street and still Short. However, we won't serve alcohol on Short Street. We will make it sort of an activity place. People can hang out. There can be just, you know, eat their food, whatever that is. That proposal is complete, along with a safety plan that we developed based off of the village because we have to come up with that now, since we are no longer at the Bryant Center. So at the end, it does say, you know, working with, you know, Chief Page. So that's, that, that is all going to be happening now. That will be in Sam Stewart's mailbox tonight because it is fully completed, 100% application. The parade route has changed. That's been finalized. We're coming from Antioch Midwest. We're going to use it for overflow parking. I'm actually going to reach out to Maveka to see if we can use their parking lot. And we're moving forward. So, you know, it's up to the village to allow us to use Walnut and Short Street. And we have a meeting at 5 o'clock on Wednesday that I asked Erica to schedule for us since we weren't hearing back from village personnel. And you're all welcome to attend if you'd like. So that's kind of where this conversation's probably going to end on our side for right now until Wednesday.
Okay, thanks, Amy.
You're welcome.
All right, Phillip, real quick, because we need to end this meeting.
Yes, you do. It's nice to meet you.
Hi, Phillip Rourke, president of Pride. And one of the other things that I would request is a process. What is the process when council does sponsor so much money? And then what is the process for, I guess, the, how do we get the bill? What does that look like? How's it itemized? How does council know what exactly they're sponsoring and when does that come to the organization? One of the things that's missing here is process. And I'd like that to be a part of how all of this kind of trickles down too. So if you say, we're going to sponsor $5,000 or $2,000, I'd like to see, as an organization, I'd like to see what that means and what else is on top of that. I think you need to know that. I think for us moving forward as a village, other organizations are going to need to know that. And it shouldn't be such, it shouldn't be such a conversation. It should be just as laid out, I guess, as Seattle.
And thanks for that, Phillip. I'll say that the process that, you know, we currently have in place is, you know, you fill out the form, you make your requests. I understand that that has gotten confused this year. And then I think you're right, there will probably be a new process if some of these things.
I would like that process to be laid out and not discovered as.
But we do have a process now, which is, you know, the request form, like you guys have filled out in the past. And then we look at and say, yes, we can do bathrooms. So that, that is still there, but we got, we got a process now, right? Which is that we're going to figure out stuff tomorrow, we're going to have a meeting on Wednesday. on Wednesday, and then we're going to move forward.
Perfect, thank you.
And from process, you know, this, the request came to council last year, and the discussion about us covering public safety was held at this table, and then there are the banners, the food, the space rental, all those things were itemized, and we discussed them here at the, at the table.
Right.
So I think the, the fees thing, or the recovery thing, has certainly created the chaos as it is now, and I think that, I don't know if council's weighing in on this decision tonight, I think the expectation is that you will. Whatever gets decided now, it should probably be the basis for all the other four events that we're having, because there are other events that are being held. We got street fair, we got Fourth of July, we got Juneteenth, we've got, there's a lot of events, so I think that whatever, so that we stay on the same page about what happens with the events, I think.
Really quick, really quickly, just really very briefly, I, I don't think it's entirely fair to ask for a village manager to ask council to weigh in right now. We haven't really had the chance to absorb everything. I really appreciate hearing from Pride and the business owners regarding Pride, but to ask us to weigh in on it right now at 11 o'clock at night, we've been here since six, and we have all this information to digest, and all of these things that are up in the air, all this stuff we've been presented with, I think is entirely unfair.
Yep, and, and we will not make a decision tonight.
So I'd love to have some more time to think about the, the future stuff, but just from like a relationship standpoint, the way that this would work in the rest of my professional and personal world, is like, this didn't go very well, so now we try to, like, really bend over backwards to try to help them do this really well. So we do, like, whatever we did last year as like a baseline, and then we talk it out, and we say, this was a bummer, and now we want to try to help you some more than we would usually. So I just, since apparently we're making these decisions here amongst us at this point, that's my two cents, is like, this sounds like it went really poorly, I feel really bad, and I didn't have any idea about any of it, I think we ought to be trying to figure out how to help them as, at least as much as last year, and if there are easy decisions where we can help them more than last year, or to make things go smoother, given the way it's gone, let's do it. Okay, that's all.
Can I just, if there's a funding decision made on May 1, will it jam you up?
Well, as far as all printing material and stuff, we are asking that if the decision we made on here goes on board, that's, that's what we need, the printing material, and direct marketing.
That's, and that's a portion of the ask, right?
Well, I mean, we're, I think.
Yeah, so.
I'm the vouchman.
So that's why I was saying we're running out of time, you know, unfortunately, we're here and it's at the last minute. We can try and push it back to the first, if that's fine, and if that's more comfortable for you. One of the things that I, I agree with Gavin, again, and I'll just go to process, you know, and conversation, Kevin was talking about work sessions, if there was ever a need for a work session to work through what finances are, how they get distributed, do I know what that is, and what do we want to do moving forward confidently and securely? This would be a great one. But we, to Judy's question, we can stretch it out to May 1. What we do have is the opportunity for you to see what we're working with right now, and if it's going to be like last year, then that's totally fine. A lot of that is, where does the Village of Yellow Springs sit when it comes to sponsoring Pride? And we want to give as much leeway as we can, because we know that this conversation is quick for you, as well as it's quick for us. So Judy, yes, we can wait until the, until the first, and then we just push back our deadlines.
Our meeting's on the second, I think, isn't it? Or is it on the first?
So you can have the meeting on the first, and then answer to us by the second? Is that comfortable?
Meeting on, you didn't answer on the first.
On the first. We're comfortable with that?
Are you comfortable with that?
I'm comfortable with that, and what I will tell you is, if not, because I, we have to do deadlines on this side, you know, and I'm so sorry, this is coming to you like a blizzard.
Okay.
But if by the first.
I'm going to make a motion that, because there are clearly going to be expenses that cover that presenting sponsor, so I'm going to make a motion that we, the village is a presenting sponsor for YS Pride again this year.
My second.
Okay? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Okay, so we'll work out the details this week.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Okay. We got reports in the packet on boards and commissions, so any future agenda items?
I have them.
Okay?
Tell them to you. You can come out with an agenda planning.
All right, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move.
My second.
All those in favor? Aye? Any opposed?
No.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Thanks.
Man.